Okay, with that, I'm in. Nope, it's still 6:29. We'll just false start. And prolonging.
My apologies. Sometimes that takes, you know, one minute. Sometimes it takes three minutes, so.
Perfect. And now at 6:30, I will call the meeting of the Lafayette City Council, the December 12, 2022 meeting to order. And by a visual accounting and verification, I will confirm that all members of the council are present. And we will move on to agenda item number three, which is an adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Councilmember Candell and Councilmember Quoc got his hand up first. So, so we have a motion by Councilmember Candell and a second by Councilmember Quoc. I will conduct the roll call vote. Councilmember Candell.
Aye.
Councilmember Dawson.
Aye.
Councilmember Quoc.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Andori.
Aye.
And I, and I also. And so we have unanimously adopted the agenda. And so now is, it is time to move on to agenda item four. And this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to item, the closed session, to items not on the, it's my last one. And for items not on the agenda, we provide this opportunity prior to closed session and then also when we start again at seven. So if you wish to speak to items not on the closed session, we invite you to do that now by raising your hand. Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, if anyone would like to make a comment at this time, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now. I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. And before we go on to agenda item five, which is the council will go into closed session, are there any members of the public who would like to speak to any of the items five A, B, or C on the closed session agenda?
Mayor, I do not see any hands raised. Mayor, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we will go into closed session and we will be back as close to or at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Hi, Teresa.
Hi. We're just waiting on Gina. Actually, that was, I shouldn't jinx it. That was one of the smoothest, just come right over.
This is Suzanne speaking. Can you hear me? I can hear you. Let me just see what's going on. Okay, I think we have that resolved on Zoom. Thank you for your patience, everyone.
Hmm. I'm just waiting on Gina. Actually, that was, I shouldn't jinx it. That was one of the smoothest, just come right over.
This is Suzanne speaking. Can you hear me? I can hear you. Um, let me just see what's going on. Okay, I think we have that resolved on Zoom. Thank you for your patience, everyone. I will stop my screen sharing.
I will stop my screen sharing now.
So I'm showing just a few more seconds, but now it is seven o'clock PM. So we will open, come back to the Lafayette City Council meeting and I will ask City Attorney Subramanian to report on any action from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no reportable action.
Thank you. Excuse me. So with that, we will now go to Agenda Item Six, which is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda, but that is also within the purview of the Lafayette City Council. And Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor. There are some people with their hands raised. So the first person to provide comment at this time is David Clark, followed by Libby Henry. And if anyone else would like to speak at this time, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. Thank you.
Oh, let's start. Hi, everyone. A couple of things. One, happy holidays to everyone. I know it's been a... I'm not sure what the right adverb would be. Frustrating, contentious, whatever. It's been a long year, but happy holidays to everyone. And I really do appreciate all the back and forth and the interplay that we've had. Seriously. One other thing, I will say that I personally regret that we didn't get the the changes to the codification of the downtown Creeks Plan implemented this calendar year, but that is, we'll we'll address that next year. I did want to spend a little time on a comment. There's a follow up that I made to a comment I made and the conversation that the council had last, at the last meeting with respect to the inclusion of of Bart in the Rena submission. And I know, I know that's not happening now. I'm not trying to change that. But it seems to me, I'm thinking about this, that there's probably, where maybe a way to include Bart in this Rena allocation cycle anyway. And I think one way that might happen, I had asked at the last meeting whether we could amend the EIR, and the answer was no. Well, it seems to me that the, because the upzoning took a, the upzoning of the Rena identified sites doesn't have to happen for three years. So we've got a three-year window that we can kind of work with a little bit. And I think Rena does accept amendments. It's right in the statute. The statute refers to amendments to Rena, the actual, to HCD and with respect to Rena. So it seems to me something along the lines of, we submit what we're going to submit now so that we're in substantial compliance by the, as of the January 31st due date next year. That's a given. But sometime next year, or within that three-year, the expiration of that three-year period, it seems to me that we could, whatever the right verb is, draft a revised, an updated, a new EIR circulated with the findings that we, what we kind of agreed on with respect to the very high fire severity zone, which would be significant and unavoidable. Then once that circulated, I think we could probably, well, I think we could submit a revised amendments to the plan that we previously submitted to HCD. And by doing it that way, we'd be in substantial compliance the entire time. I don't see there'd be any gaps in the substantial compliance. So we're not exposed to builder's remedy. But I think, I think if we, that, that that sequence of events seems to make sense to me as a possibility to be able to include the the Bart parking lots as part of, in this Rena site. Anyway, I'll toss that out and what it may or may not be worth. So that's, that's what I had. Thanks very much. Again, happy holidays, Senator.
I know I muted. Are there any questions for the speaker? And while I was muted, I said, thank you, Mr. Clark. So I will say it again.
All right.
The next speaker is Libby Henry. And if anyone else would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now, as there are currently no other hands raised.
Welcome, Ms. Henry.
Hi, everybody. Happy holidays, whatever you, whatever you celebrate. I simply wanted to, I thought this was the appropriate place to do that, is to ask that the item eight I about the housing element update be removed from the consent calendar so that people can have public discussion.
We will give you, thank you for coming on now. We will also, when it comes time for the consent calendar, we first ask if anyone on the council has anything that they would like to address or pull. And then we ask members of the public. So we will do that at that time.
I did it at the wrong time. Oh.
That's okay.
Can I, like, can you just transfer this over to that time? As a request? I don't know.
We have, we have received, we have received the request, so.
All right.
But, but members of the public will be asked again.
Okay. And congratulations, Carl. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, there are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we will go on to our next, our next section, Agenda Item Seven, which is presentations. And we have a couple of presentations this evening. And we will begin with the Emergency Preparedness Commission. And as members, if members who are coming over for that presentation would like to raise their virtual hands, so Suzanne can see you and match against her list, that would be great. And as they're coming over, I will thank them in advance for their service on the commission. Welcome. Hi, Duncan, Mr. Seibert. And so do we have everyone? Basically, we have Duncan Seibert, John Cornell, and Chief Aldrit.
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome all.
Welcome, and thank you for inviting the Emergency Preparedness Commission to make this presentation to the council this evening. Speaking on behalf of the, the commission members, I'm here as the chairman. We have Commissioner George Fagoni, Michelle Heckle, Sherry Hoover, Michael Melowitz, and Carol Yates have been commissioners all year. And we had a commissioner resign in May, and he was, the vacancy was filled by William Pidgen in August. So that is the makeup of the commission right now. And we have the advisors of Chief Aldrit and John Cornell and Kathy Sorgis Moscato is our not secretary, but she handles all the written. What did we accomplish last year, this current year? The big item this current year was a second edition of the Lafayette Residence Guide to wildfire preparedness and evacuation. We put out a guide in 2019. It was well received. It was used as a model by many agencies. So it, it really became the, the standard by which everyone moved forward with this sort of guide. It was even used as a model in several other states. I know in one jurisdiction in Georgia and one in Connecticut, one in Illinois used it. And others have told me that they were using it. What we did this year was we decided that we needed to add a little more information to it. So we added a four-page separate cover to it. So it's now a 16-page internal signature plus a four-page cover that works for the printer. And we got, that's a lot of good new material in it. This was adopted by the council or adopted by the commission and passed by council and then sent to the printer. And, and it was mailed in late May. So it arrived at every mailbox in La Mirinda in June. Our next accomplishment was we did a national night out on Tuesday, August 2nd. We had a few national night out parties because of COVID and people not wanting to get together as much as they have in the past. Things like this were rather slow this year. But we did have some parties where police, fire, ambulance, and LEPC visited the the locations where residents joined us and, and found out more about community first response. We participated in the Lafayette Art and Wine Festival. We shared a booth this year, as we have in the past, with the prime commission. And we distributed a lot of material. On the Great Shakeout on October 20th, we, it was used as a training event in Lafayette. And we had many shakeout exercises at schools and throughout the community throughout La Mirinda. We collaborated to a small degree this year with Senior Services Commission planning for access and functional needs during disasters. This is an ongoing project. And there will be more of that in the coming year. The Lafayette Emergency Preparedness Commission also acts as the Lafayette Citizen Core Council under FEMA guidelines. And as such, they are the they, along with the corresponding bodies from Arinda and Maraga, are the authorities that, that CERT responds to, as they constitute the, the CERT body. So the CERT Steering Committee reports to the Citizen Core Councils of each of the three cities. Somewhat unusual arrangement, but it's working well for us. The CERT program has been going in La Mirinda now for 18 years. And we have approximately 1,300 CERT graduates. Not all of them active by any means, but we have an active list of in the 500 to 600 range. It depends on, on the day as to whether they define themselves as active or not. Our goals for next year, for this coming year, for 2022, 2023, we revise the emergency operations plan as necessary. So it's a constant process of revising everything within the, the plan. We look at it, the plan with all of its emergency support functions. There are about 15 emergency support functions, each one addressing a particular activity or particular function that goes on during a disaster response, such as fire and rescue, or resources, or law enforcement. Those are all emergency support functions. And we identify them and we define how they're handled by the, the city during times of disaster. Some of them fortunately are just pass-throughs because they're handled by the county. So our emergency support function is, is a one-pager in those cases that says this function is handled by the county, this, with this department. But some of them get quite lengthy and care and shelter and some of the others become fairly involved. So we review those at a continual process because things do change. We continue and expand collaboration with the Senior Services Commission as much as we can. It's a matter of time for each commission and how we can, can get together and make things work. We continue training with Web EOC software. As you're all aware, the Web EOC is the software that we use to, to manage the emergency operations center during times of disaster. So the Emergency Preparedness Commission functions as, as mentors being in there to help guide people who use it once a year, twice a year, and, and don't remember, they know their own job, but they forget the ins and outs of some of the software. So, so we're there to help. And Firewise has become a, a major portion of what La Mirinda's or Lafayette Emergency Preparedness does. Firewise is a national program, National Fire Protection Association program of voluntary gatherings, voluntary groupings of neighbors to address and reduce the fire hazards in their neighborhoods and to work together to make everything make everything less hazardous, to, to reduce the fire hazards. And to do this, we, we work with CONFIRE. We have a, a new inspector there. We've had, we've gone through some turnover in, in the inspectors, but we're, we're getting there. And in order to get interest forms, and we're, we're doing more publicizing of the, the Firewise. And there, we now have a common form. We just settled it with Maraga, Arinda Fire last week, so that now everyone in La Mirinda can come to one website, fill out the form, doesn't matter where you live. And then we will take the forms and create neighborhoods, get the interest within the neighborhoods and create the neighborhoods that can then be sent to CONFIRE. It takes eight neighbors minimum in a neighborhood to go to CONFIRE. So that's our, our goal. And we're going to, to work on that a lot harder this coming year is to focus on, on working on neighborhoods, getting, getting more neighborhood groups together so that we can give them to CONFIRE. So we're pleased to report our accomplishments and goals. And we're trying to re, prepare for and respond to emergencies and to leave no one behind. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. I want to make sure that I wasn't on mute. Thank you very much for it. And I'll go to, go to questions in just a second, but thank you very But thank you very much for the detailed report and the work on that. I saw lots of nodding of heads and smiles as you were going through your list of accomplishments and also the goals. And very much appreciate all the work that you're doing on that. I do have a couple of comments after, but Councilmember Candell, you had your hand up first.
Thank you. An excellent job and everybody on your committee is, commission is doing such good work. Really appreciate it. You didn't say it in your verbal report, but I wanted to kind of point out that one of the things you want to do is change. The National Night Out from the traditional police community partnership. To make, to making it more of a get the neighbors together to help with evacuation planning. I think that's brilliant. I think that is a wonderful change. And, and make sure that, that, you know, we're helping you reinforce that. And, and try to get everybody in every neighborhood to, to have, you know, just even if it's five neighbors. You know, talking with each other, that would be fantastic, you know, and planning evacuation. I think that's, that's a wonderful change of direction for that night. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we're working hard with Zone Haven to get everyone to know their evacuation zone. Well, while knowing your zone is not that important for evacuation, it's important for repopulation. But to have people aware that there is a, a program that there's a. A method to our madness in getting them out of their homes and out of their neighborhoods. And making them aware of the need to, to evacuate. And, and we have to look harder at, at neighborhoods where the access is. How should I say it? Challenge? Where we have a hundred homes or so and, and one extra. That can be a, a real challenge. So we have to work with the, with the residents. To figure out how they're going to evacuate.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I had made, made a note of that as well. So thank you, Councilmember Candell for bringing that up. Looking, I will just comment also on the, the Firewise. I did see in our reports this evening and how many are in the pipeline and how many we have. And so I think that's great. And as you publicize that more. I'm sure you're already doing this with the liaisons that are, you know, on the committee. But working with Suzanne Erle, our communications analyst. So that we are definitely using all of our media opportunities to get the word out about both Firewise. And then the opportunity for National Night Out and throughout the year to bring neighbors together. So thank you on that. Any other questions or? Comments? Councilmember Dawson?
I just want to thank the commission again for all the hard work over these many, many years. And the accumulation of the great information to educate the community. I think I'm definitely interested in, in that goal of, of working on those communication of evacuation plans. I know that's important to the community, especially as we went through the housing element and that came up as a, quite the comment in terms of. Evacuation timing and how that would go. So that communication again will be important, particularly to the seniors who live in these areas. We keep track of them. So I appreciate that you're tracking that in your goals going forward and the work you've done to, towards that now. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I open it up for public comment, Chief Aldret or John Cornell. And John, I, I don't know what your, I, I should know what your title is, but I'm going to call you John Cornell. Do either of you have comments to make?
Thank you, Mayor. So John's official title is Emergency, Emergency Services Analyst. But I like to refer to him as our Emergency Services Coordinator. But just thank you to the commission and their support and to the council support. Excuse me, back in July, we did reclassify John's position with your support to that Emergency Services Coordinator. Just emphasizing the importance that the council, the city places on us being ready. Really, I had John and I here just to support Duncan. John, if you want to take five seconds, but just update them on Alert Wildfire and our Cal O E S P S B S grant. Those are some other projects that are, just want to update those real quick and then we'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Of course. Good evening, members of the council. So yeah, the two things that the chief touched on. Did I lose you? It froze. Can you hear?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So the, the two things that the chief touched on. We did apply for and got a, a grant from Cal O E S. That was funded through PG&E that focused on power resiliency and communication. And with that grant, we were able to apply some of that money towards radios that we have distributed to all of the schools. And the nice thing with these radios is that they actually operate on our police department radio network. Which is a very redundant and just all around very capable radio network. And that's something where if the situation ever arose where we couldn't communicate with a school. The principal could turn that radio on and talk to the chief or myself. Or really anybody in the police department directly on a very reliable connection. And then the other part of that grant is going towards some backup power solutions. As well as a solar and battery system up at our public works yard. And we opted to put it up at our public work shed because not only do they support us year-round, twenty-four seven. But that is one of the locations that if we needed to set up a, a makeshift city hall or a emergency command post, we could. And then having that solar and battery setup up there would allow us to do that without running a diesel generator around the clock. So that process is, is in the works right now. We do have a contract signed. The company is working on all the necessary permits and design, but we hope to have that finalized by February. And then the Alert Wildfire Camera Project is something that we've been working on since twenty nineteen. I think everybody's familiar with that. The city continues to support that project, which has just been phenomenal to be able to have that resource during fire season. And out of fire season where Lafayette really is supporting a greater part of the county. Not only with the installation, but the data backhaul and just keeping those cameras functional. And, and you know, without the city's support, I don't know who would take care of the cameras, quite honestly. But it is another resource that we have. All of the agencies that we work with are, are very grateful to have such generous, you know, council members and, and city that allow us to do that. So those are kind of the two big things that we've been working on. A lot of stuff in the background that Duncan talked about. All around a really, you know, for us, I think it was a very progressive year and next year looking forward to some, some more projects.
Thank you. And thank you for all of the. Then John, John also, Emergency Preparedness Coordinator Cornell. John goes off the tongue faster, but I know that you do a lot of work and on the technology and the cameras. And all of that and just on behalf of the community and others. In other areas of La Mirinda and the county. Thank you very much for all of the support and chief for supporting that as well. So with that, we will go to public comment. If there's anyone who wants to comment on the. The Emergency Preparedness Task Force presentation. We invite you to raise your hand and Suzanne will help get you in.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor mentioned, if you'd like to comment on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now. Mayor, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, so they feel very secure and very prepared and ready to move forward. So thank you again for coming and doing this presentation and for all that you do throughout the year. You have an aggressive set of goals there. So we look forward to seeing you again next year, throughout the year. But with your update next year. Thank you. And we will now move on to Jennifer Wakeman. Our Assistant Administrative Services Director will be giving us our audit presentation. And for those keeping track, it's item seven B. Welcome, Jennifer. You're on mute.
I was trying to improve my lighting, but that's not going to work right now. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here tonight to present the city's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. This report is the third prepared by the audit firm Badawi and Associates. The finance subcommittee reviewed a draft report at their meeting on November twenty-eighth. And their comments have been incorporated into the final report. Badawi and Associates have issued an unmodified or clean opinion on their audit of the city's financial statements. The city continues to be in a strong financial position with healthy operations and reserves. All of the city's financial highlights can be found in the Management's Discussion and Analysis section, which starts on page five of the audit report. I did want to highlight two of the most significant items, financial items that happened in fiscal year twenty-two. One was the receipt of ARPA funds in the amount of three point two million and the expenditure of one point six five million. And you will see the resulting difference in the city's fund balance. And the second significant financial item was the receipt of two point two million dollars from the Palace Colorado's Development Agreement fees. Payment of the principal stopped the accrual of interest on that amount. So the amount due of one point four five million was added to the city's books as a future receipt. At this time, the auditors are completing the city's, sorry, single audit report for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. This report is required whenever a public agency receives more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal grant monies. Once they complete that report, they will be able to issue their evaluation on the city's internal controls. And I will come back before council to present the results of those reports. I'm not sure if anyone noticed, but this year, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting is for fiscal year twenty-one. Is missing from the front of our audit. It has been there for the last several years. And I wanted to just acknowledge that the Government Finance Officers Association, which does that award program. Ran into some delays this year. And so I'm still waiting to hear back on fiscal year twenty-one. But once I do, I will again come back before council to do that presentation as I usually do. I, I, I think it was just a challenge with finding evaluators this year. So even though there have been delays for the fiscal year twenty-one report review, we still plan to submit for fiscal year twenty-two. So hopefully we can get back on track with our fiscal year twenty-three audit. The auditor is in the audience today and both he and I are happy to take any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. And, and we figured that there was probably a delay somewhere or, you know, certificates were lost in the mail. So thank you, thank you very much. And thank you to you and the whole staff and team. Because it does take everybody working together to have, have this great audit every sort of year after year. Are there any questions from council members? And do we want to bring Mr. Badawi in? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions. So with that, I will ask Suzanne to please invite any members of the public. Who would like to speak to this item before we receive it and file.
You have City Clerk Robbins here. If any member of the public who would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand now. Mayor, I see no hands raised.
Thank you. And thank you, City Clerk Robbins for stepping in. So I'll bring it up. I do see a hand raised now. And is it still on this item? For Pat Horn. So we can bring.
Which I assume is Erling Horn.
I was going to imagine that that's the case and we will see. Welcome.
Yep. Have to click all the boxes. Just a question on Polo, Colorado. So I missed that particular segment of, of Jennifer's report.
Sure.
And I was wondering if she could just repeat that.
Absolutely. When the, gosh, we'll have the date better.
So just so that we stay consistent with public comment. So normally when a member of the public asks a question, we then bring back all of the questions at the same time. So, so Mr. Horn, if you have more questions beyond that, if you could ask them now. And then we will have you move you back to the waiting room.
Thank you, Mayor. No, that's my only question.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other speakers on this item? Mayor, I don't see any hands raised. So.
Okay. Okay. And then we'll move the speaker back over and Jennifer, go ahead. Thank you.
Sure. It's my understanding that when the Palace Colorado's project was submitted. And a development agreement was created. There was. A recognition of the impact to neighboring agencies. And so as such, a certain amount was promised to each agency to be paid at a certain point in the application process. That point in time was met in fiscal year twenty-two. And so that's why we received the two point two five million dollars on that project. The development agreement also called for the accrual of interest on the outstanding amount, you know, so that the developer would be motivated to pay. So now that they have paid in fiscal year twenty-two, the accrual of that interest stopped. And so we now have a, an interest receivable item for one point four five million on the books, which we will eventually receive. Again, as the development agreement calls for them to pay it.
Okay, thank you. So any other, any questions from council members? Don't have any other hands raised. And Mala, remind me, we're seconds away and on a receive and file, do I take a motion for that?
No need to, Mayor.
Thank you. I, I didn't think so, but went to confirm. So Jennifer, thank you very, very much. And we will move on to the next agenda item. And we have the agenda item C, which we will turn over to City Clerk Joanne Robbins. Who was assisting with our last item. And she will be administering the oath of office to Councilmember Susan Candell. To Councilmember Wei Tai Kwak and to me, Teresa Geringer.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, and in, over the last few days. I have in-person met with each new council member and administered their oath of office in person. Susan Candell for her four-year term, Teresa Geringer for her four-year term. And Wei Tai Kwak for his two-year term. I will read the oath now and just ask that each of you affirm at the end of the reading. That you will well and faithfully discharge these duties. So let me read the oath now. I think it's powerful and deserves repeating. Do you, Susan Candell, Teresa Geringer and Wei Tai Kwak solemnly affirm That you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you're about to enter.
I will.
I will.
And Wei Tai?
I will as well.
Thank you. My part is done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, and if Councilmember Candell or Councilmember Kwak want to say something. But I did want to thank Joanne because even if there's not an election. And as happened in this case, the three of us were the only ones who filed paper. Joanne is on top of it. She is making sure she has a binder with everything that we need. She meets with every candidate, any candidate who wants to pull papers and walks them through the process. And so with much gratitude on behalf of our residents, I want to thank you. And the rest of the council, the residents as well. So thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
And with that, I'm not really delaying. We will move to agenda item. Seven D, which will be our council reorganization. And, and I noticed that I looked back at some previous ones, that this is in a different order. But the way that we have been doing it the last couple of years, the mayor, the current mayor. provides a few remarks, and then we will do a presentation, and then we will have the election of our mayor and vice mayor for the upcoming year, and they will both be invited to give a few remarks. So with that, I will share a few remarks and promise mostly to keep them brief. I will start out by saying thank you to the residents for the opportunity to serve as mayor in twenty twenty-two. It has been an honor to represent the council at many events over the last year. Ribbon cuttings, community events such as Wreaths Across America Memorial Day, speaking to the fourth and fifth graders at Lafayette Elementary School about the role of city government, and most recently welcoming Santa to the annual It's a Wonderful Life. And while mayor is one of five council members who have been elected by the residents, it doesn't have any additional voting rights or power. It is, we're one of five, but with that said, it is a very meaningful role, and it is one that I have been honored and oftentimes, more often than not, humbled to serve. As a previous mayor shared with me, the transition from mayor to former mayor and continuing council member can be a hard transition. It can be a little bit hard. I promise that we will have a peaceful transition, and I will endeavor to retire my parade and introduction wave. And moving, moving on, we will keep with the tradition where the outgoing mayor provides a few highlights of the year, and I would like to share just a few of the highlights that were on my list. We worked with the Diaz family to dedicate a plaque to honor Crossing Guard Ashley Diaz, and we participated in the unveiling ceremony. We reopened Brook Street Park and tried very hard to be very brief, so we didn't get in the way of the young members of our community who were there waiting to go down the slide and to experience and experience that new equipment. We made lots of safe traffic safety improvements around our schools with more to come in twenty twenty-three. And our local road safety plan task force is underway to continue to move Vision Zero forward. Construction of the Rain Garden project at First Street and Golden Gateway is happening as we speak, and I understand that it will be opening in early in twenty twenty-three. After many years of advocacy and education efforts by Project Earth, they started while they were students at Burton Valley. They're now Stanley Middle School. The council voted to declare Lafayette an idol-free city. As I noted in the Emergency Preparedness Task Force, we increased the number of firewise neighborhoods. The latest numbers that I've seen have six approved and five neighborhoods pending. I want to say that the goal was originally eight, but I'll leave that to Confire and the Emergency Task Force. We continue to work with the chamber and our business community to promote and maintain a vibrant downtown. We kicked off the development of our fiscal sustainability plan. And in partnership with the Lafayette Community Foundation and the Chamber of Commerce, we put on Lafayette's first annual Community Day. Where close to two hundred volunteers came together to do projects throughout Lafayette to build community, give back, and serve others, and I'm excited to say that Community Day will be back again this year. We have, of course, can't go without saying that we continued working on the housing element and other elements of the general plan, and that work will continue. And the city, just in the last meeting or so, is in the due diligence phase of purchasing two key properties in the downtown. And as noted in that meeting, there will be plenty of opportunities for the community to be involved in what we do with those product projects. So as a community, we have a lot to be proud of, and as I said, I was just going to provide a few highlights. For the full picture, I encourage everyone to read the staff report for item ten A on tonight's agenda, a report on city council priorities and department work plans for fiscal year twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Once you review this report and you see how much has been done, I know that you will agree that we owe a debt of gratitude to our incredible city staff. We have an amazing city manager who is leading a highly qualified, committed team who gets things done, all while experiencing staffing shortages and increased workload and demands. They are the unsung heroes who make the council look good, and I encourage you to thank them whenever you see them or encounter them. I also want to express my gratitude to my colleagues on the council and to all the volunteers who serve on commissions and committees. I want to thank you for your thoughtful analysis and preparation as we work together to find solutions to the myriad of challenges and opportunities facing our community. Thank you to the residents of the community who have allowed me to continue to serve for four more years. I look forward to continuing to listen and work with you. And last, but definitely not least, I want to thank my family for their support and encouragement and to Michael for being one of the most committed YouTube attendees. Thank you. And with that, I will turn it over to Vice Mayor Andori.
Well, Teresa, as you conclude your term as mayor, I want to thank you for your inclusive style of leadership, which definitely made it easier for all of us to carry out our responsibilities this year. And I want to thank you for your constant focus on building our sense of community. This was most evident in our Lafayette Community Day, our new Lafayette Community Day. But everything you did, outreach to residents, attending the events, and you just mentioned a few of the ones that you participated in, and the way you conducted our meetings, all helped strengthen our sense of community. So thank you very much for that. And the city has a small token of appreciation for your first year as mayor. And it is, of course, not a surprise because the city has a protocol for almost everything. And all first-term mayors receive a plaque with a gavel. So if you have it, it's already.
I just happen to have it in a place of honor right here. It magically appeared on my. So, thank you.
And of course, our residents have given you another four-year term on the council, so.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you very much. And I think I have one more, one more. And thank you, and thank you, Joanne, for coordinating the recognition and the acknowledgement. So I believe I have. And we can treat these all as one item for public comment, right, Mala? Yeah, and so I believe that now it is my honor to ask for my last act is to. And I think I can do this motion. I know that normally I turn this over to others, but if the council will indulge me, I would like to nominate Vice Mayor Andori to be the mayor of the city of Lafayette for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. And I would like to nominate Councilmember Gina Dawson to be Vice Mayor for twenty twenty-three. I added the twenty twenty-two, but it overlaps. So do I have a second? That's, we can split it into halves, but we'll go with Councilmember Kwak. I think got his hand up first. And so I will con- well, wait a minute.
You'll need to take public comment.
Thank you on this item because we are doing a vote. So are there members of the public who would like to speak on this item?
Yes, the first person to speak is Vincent. And if anyone else would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Vincent Salimi, and I wanted to thank and congratulate the entire city council on getting reelected, and I would like to thank former mayor Geringer for what she has done the last year. It was a pleasure working with you, and I also would like to congratulate our new mayor and our new vice mayor. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much, and welcome, Mr. Salimi. And for those of you who don't know, Mr. Salimi is just recently is the past mayor or former mayor of the city of Panol. And I understand that we may be seeing more of you as we move forward. So thank you very much for being here this evening.
The next speaker is Pat Horn. And if anyone else would like to speak at this time, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now.
Welcome back, Mr. Horn.
Yes, Mayor Gerger, very well said, short and to the point, and it was beautifully, beautifully said, and I thank you for that, and particularly your comments with staff. It's just, it's fantastic and has been for the years. And you've been part of that, helping that keep staff together. Fantastic. Thank you. That's my comments.
Thank you. Okay, so we will, I don't see any other hands raised. And so we will come back and complete the election of mayor and vice mayor. And I will conduct the roll call vote. Councilmember Candell.
Aye.
And Councilmember Dawson.
Aye.
Councilmember Kwak.
Enthusiastically aye.
Vice Mayor Andori.
Aye.
And I am also an enthusiastic aye, and so we have unanimously passed the virtual gavel. And I will invite now Mayor Andori to provide us with remarks and congratulate you and you, Vice Mayor Dawson. I would very much look forward to continuing our work together. I think we have a very good team here, and I know we'll be in good hands. So I'll over to you.
Thank you. First, thank you to my family, particularly my wife Sharon, to my colleagues on the council, and to the community for your support. I want you to know that I am deeply aware of the privilege it is to serve on the city council and as mayor and of the responsibility that comes with that privilege. Our city does face challenges. At a very high level, we are affected by five external challenges. First are the ongoing effects of COVID nineteen, both the economic effects and the public health effects. On the economic front, we need to be mindful of the vitality of our downtown and our business community. On the health front, we each need to do not only what we can do to protect ourselves, but what we can do to protect other members of our community. Second is the reality of climate change. The most challenging manifestation for us in Lafayette is the threat of wildfire. But in everything we do as a city and as individuals, we need to focus on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Third is the housing crisis and the role the state government is playing. We do need to build more housing. We particularly need to build more affordable housing, and we need to do it in a way that makes Lafayette an even more desirable place to live. Fourth is the challenge of realizing the ideals of our nation, of truly having liberty and justice for all. This is a national challenge. It is a local challenge. And fifth is the challenge of demography. We are becoming an older community, and we need to keep that in mind in our decisions. We are officially an age-friendly city. We need to put that into practice. We have challenges. We have a lot to do during the next year. And fortunately, we have a great team in place to pursue our goals. I want to thank in advance our city manager, Narup Sravatsa, our city attorney, Mala Subramanian, our dedicated city staff, our chief of police, Ben Aldrich, and our outstanding police department, all our commission committee and task force members, and everyone who volunteers to make Lafayette a better place to live. We have a lot to do, and as Teresa said, as former Mayor Geringer said, it is not the mayor who sets our priorities. Each year, we, together as a council, set our priorities for the fiscal year. Our four current priorities were adopted in March of this year for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-two through June thirty, twenty twenty-three. They are first wildfire prevention and preparedness and utility safety. Second, improve pedestrian and traffic safety and multimodal mobility. Third, create a downtown and Mount Diablo corridor specific plan. And fourth, develop a fiscal sustainability plan for the short term and long term. We want your input as we revise our priorities. So I want you to know that at our next meeting in January, we will do a mid-course review of these priorities to see if we need to tweak them before the end of the fiscal year. And then on Saturday, February eleventh, we will meet for a full discussion of priorities for the fiscal year that begins July first, twenty twenty-three. Again, we welcome your input and participation. In addition to the main priorities, there are, of course, ongoing activities of our city staff and our commissions and committees and other activities our city supports. A partial list of these includes strengthening our city schools partnership, the work of the Community DEIB Committee, our essential collaboration with the Lafayette Chamber of Commerce, support for the Park Theater Trust efforts to renovate the park theater and bring additional vitality to our downtown, support for the Lafayette Library and Learning Center, the heart of our community, the work of the General Plan Advisory Committee on Updating Our General Plan, obtaining approval of our housing element update before January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, the work of the Creeks Committee, including the soon-to-be-completed Rain Garden Park at First Street and Golden Gateway, implementing Vision Zero and the development of the local road safety plan. This is not even close to being a complete immediate to-do list. And even that list would not include very worthwhile projects and activities which many of our residents support, such as investing in affordable housing, buying and preserving open space, building protected bike lanes throughout the city, building additional sports fields, creating shaded fire breaks around the city, expanding our capacity to provide childcare, providing civic space for our own city offices, a senior center, and a teen center, creating downtown parks or adding pickleball courts. All of these would require additional resources. During the next two years, we need to decide what we want to do to make our city an even better place to live and what we are willing to invest to achieve that. Finally, while the council sets the priorities, each mayor has added something to the mix, which ideally does not require significant staff time, which is scarce, or money, which is also scarce. For example, last year, Mayor Geringer was instrumental in the development and presentation of our first Lafayette Community Day, which was very successful. This year, there are four initiatives I would like to add to the mix. First, I would like to revive something we did twelve years ago. Vice Mayor Dawson is the primary liaison to the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm the alternate. We are also the council ARPA subcommittee. During twenty twenty-three, with the support of the chamber leadership, we will be making door-to-door visits with downtown businesses, both chamber members and non-members in order to develop a deeper understanding of the needs and concerns of the business community. Second, as you know, the council agreed that during twenty twenty-three, we'll explore and celebrate one hundred and seventy-five-plus years of Lafayette history. This will be an opportunity to increase awareness and appreciation of our history and of a wonderful resource for our community, the Lafayette Historical Society. You will soon hear more about what this celebration will involve. The plus in one hundred and seventy-five-plus years is very important. It has a double meaning. We want to go back beyond one hundred and seventy-five years to include in our celebration a recognition and understanding of the indigenous people who were on the land that is now Lafayette, as well as the Spaniards and Rancheros who were here before Elam Brown arrived. We also use the plus because we want to look forward. During twenty twenty-three, we are exploring and celebrating one hundred and seventy-five-plus years of history because we are better prepared for our future and better able to shape our future if we understand our past. Third, I mentioned the challenge of climate change. Our city environmental task force has a strong legislative agenda and has already brought to us the ordinance for EV charging in multi-family buildings. What we need is a way to get each of us involved in the effort to slow climate change. The task force now has an answer for that as well. At our last meeting, the task force recommended that the city become a partner with sustainable- At our last meeting, the task force recommended that the city become a partner with Sustainable Contra Costa. The council approved the recommendation, and Lafayette is now a member. Sustainable Contra Costa has a platform, the Cleaner Contra Costa Challenge, that enables everyone to find ways to cut down on greenhouse gas emissions and save water. There's also a dashboard that shows cumulatively how households and businesses in each city in the county are doing. For each 10 pounds of carbon dioxide avoided or one gallon of water saved by a household, the city gets one point. Our La Merinda neighbors, Maraga and Arinda, were members before we joined. As of 2:30 this afternoon, Maraga has accumulated 1,028,930 points, and Arinda has 548,580 points. So many Lafayette households are already participating, and we are behind Marinda and Arinda and Maraga with 396,840 points. So let's do some good and have some fun. Let's challenge Maraga and Arinda to see which city can avoid more carbon and save more water during 2023. I've already spoken to the mayor of Maraga, and he's in. So this will be good for all of La Merinda. There's a talented subcommittee of the environmental task force that will be leading our efforts, and you'll hear more about this. But the challenge is on, so please go to cleanercontracosta.org, set up a household account, and then explore the things that you can do. Fourth, in furtherance of our city priority to make our roads safer, I want to encourage all of us to drive slower in 2023. Our roads will be safer for pedestrians, cyclists, joggers, schoolkids, drivers, all of us if we stay at or below the posted speed limits in 2023. To help us do that, Chief Aldrich will be deploying a full contingent of traffic enforcement officers, and he will be proposing an investment in technology for use in targeted enforcement. You can look for that at a future council meeting early next year. But in the meantime, all of us should slow down. There will be reminders in the form of signs, and there will be enforcement. We have challenges, and we have a long list of things we want to do and need to do. Unfortunately, we have a very engaged community. As your city council, we pledge to listen to you. We pledge to be transparent in our deliberations and actions, and we pledge to make our decisions based on the long-term best interests of our community. We will be reminded by our celebration of our history that Lafayette has always been changing. We know that Lafayette will continue to change. It is up to all of us to work together to create change that makes Lafayette an even better place to live. I look forward to working with all of you in the year ahead. And I now call upon our new vice mayor, Gina Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor Andori. That was wonderful. Um, I want to say for Mayor Geringer and Mayor Andori, your words are inspiring, both of what we've accomplished as a city and what we look forward to accomplishing and working on together in the year to come. So thank you very much for for that leadership, both just recently and and Mayor Andori, what I know will happen in our near future. So I don't have anything to add to those amazing words of inspiration and goals we have, except thank you very much to our staff, our incredible staff, again, thank them enough, all of you, and our commissioners, our volunteers who come out and are so persistent over the years to help our goals come to fruition. So appreciate that. I also, of course, thank our contractors and all our partners that we've had through the past year helping us to accomplish what we needed to do as well. And many thanks to council for your trust and confidence in in my vice mayorship. I look forward to the work ahead of us and continuing. And I just want to thank all our residents for your engagement and encouraging you to stay engaged and please come out. We do have openings in our commissions. We welcome your your voices and your your hands and your brain power. And last but not least, I I thank my family who also have inspired me. Two kids off to college after some challenging years, and I'm so proud of them. They've inspired my work as well. So thank you all.
Great. We will now open for general public comments on these last few items.
Thank you, Mayor Andori. The first person to provide comments is Don Tatson. And if anyone else would like to comment at this time, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now.
Hi.
Welcome, Mayor Tatson.
Thank you, or former Mayor Tatson. So I'm actually here as a representative of Senator Steve Glazer. And one thing I want to start out with is we just we just witnessed a peaceful transition of power and influence. And I had been through a number of these ceremonies, and I used to think that peaceful transitions were the way it worked. And unfortunately, we've learned that in various countries, including this one, in various states and in various communities, that's not always the way it works. And so you, I think you're all are to be congratulated for having yet another peaceful transition. Lafayette is now in its 60 or 54th year of incorporation, and they've always been peaceful. So keep it up. I also want to thank the three of you who are re-upping for new terms and the two of you who are in the middle of your terms for taking on these tasks and for hopefully supporting the goals outlined by Mayor Andori. And I want to remind you that we at the state can help. We can do things for you in addition to doing things to you. And we're a phone call away, and I am often amazed by how effective a phone call from someone saying they're on the Senator Glazer's staff or the senator calling can be when the work you do is met with roadblocks. So please call on us. And one of the things that I know Lafayette is very good at, and I hope you will continue to do, is to give us comments on pending legislation. When the senator looks for how he's going to vote on a bill, one of the things he always asks for is what the comments have been, particularly from the towns and cities. So please keep that up. And then finally, we have a certificate of appreciation for former Mayor Geringer on behalf of all of her work. And all I have to do now is figure out a way to get it to Joanne so she can in turn get it to Teresa. So thank you, and good luck in the next year.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for the speaker?
Wasn't wasn't going to ask a question, but thank you. I had a very hard time not unmuting and, you know, starting to kind of jump back in. No, but thank you very much, Don, mayor, former mayor Tatson and on behalf of the senator. And I bet we can figure out a way that, with all due respect, Joanne, that we can, you know, bypass and I can I can meet for coffee or a walk or something. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Don.
The next speaker is David Clark. And if anyone else would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature now. There are currently no other hands raised after Mr. Clark.
You know, I hadn't really thought about saying something with respect to this part of the agenda, but you're so inspiring, I had to. So thanks very much for this, the breadth and depth of your comments and plus your service for the prior year. And and former Mayor Geringer, I wanted to say, when you were talking about putting your some things that you can impact, one thing that you did this last year that I frankly was very grateful for was that process of of collecting questions in the public comment period and saving them till the end and trying to answer them. I mean, it's it's so helpful. Otherwise, some of those comments is just, you know, you feel like you're on the balcony yelling off into the wilderness, nothing ever comes. So thank you for that. Hopefully, that'll continue, but I really appreciate. I think you instituted that. So I appreciate that, and thank you. And current Mayor Andori, that that list of your list of goals is exhausting. I'm going to find a pillow, but thank you for that, for the detail and the thought that you put into those goals, and I look forward to working with you on achieving some of them. So thanks, everyone, and congratulations.
Thank you. Are there questions for the speaker? Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark.
Mayor Andori, there are no other hands raised.
All right, we'll move on then to item eight on the agenda, the consent calendar. We have one request from Ms. Henry to remove eight I, the housing element update. Is there any comment on that? Does anyone? Uh, Councilmember Candell.
Oh, I guess my brother Quoc had his hand up first.
Oh, I was going to make a request to remove item eight A, the minutes.
Okay, eight A. Councilmember Candell.
And I would like to remove item eight B.
Eight A and eight B. Okay, eight A minutes, eight B, the ordinance, storage of firearms. Right? Any other items? Okay, can I have a motion then for adoption of the consent calendar, items C through H?
I'll make the motion to adopt the calendar.
Motion from Vice Mayor Dawson and a second from Councilmember Candell. Take the roll call vote. Councilmember Candell.
Aye.
Immediate former Mayor Emeritus Geringer.
Aye.
Councilmember Quoc.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dawson.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it's unanimous. Okay, so we'll go on now to staff reports, item 10A. And for those of you who were on for any of those items, I doubt if anyone was waiting for the minutes. But for item eight B, the ordinance on the safe storage of firearms, and for eight I, the housing element, those will be taken at item number 12 on the agenda. It'll be after the item on the CMFA. Okay, so we're on to item 10A, City Manager Sravatsa and Administrative Services Director Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor Tracy. We'll start the presentation, and I'm available to discuss the work plans and the status of your priorities.
Okay. Trying to find my notes here. So thank you, Mayor Andori and members of the council. I'm here to speak with you about the final municipal budget for the fiscal year 2223. So as you know, this final budget refines the proposed budget that you adopted in June of this year. And most notably, what it does is it includes the actual final audited figures from the prior fiscal year. And it includes changes that have been adopted by the city councils since it was approved in June. And there are some additional recommendations from department directors to respond to current conditions. So I'm just going to go through a few of the highlights and then be available for questions. And then just to be clear, we've changed, as we did last year, we've sort of changed the schedule a bit. So this is basically a sneak preview of the budget. This will come back to you on January 9th, and that is a correction that should be made to the recommendations to continue this item to January 9th, where you will consider it again. And then after you review your priorities, it will come back again for a final time for adoption. I believe January 23rd. So the highlights from this budget are for the prior fiscal year. We had expensive variances of roughly $2.4 million to the good, meaning that we actually spent $2.4 million less than we budgeted. Those those that spending, the the savings, I would say for the most part are due to a lot of timing issues. They were also due to some staff openings, some positions that were vacant, projects deferred, maintenance that was deferred, and a large portion was with the police budget, which was being, again, you see this almost every year, we do budget for the full staffing of 17 officers, and it included a new sergeant. However, we are able to fill those positions, sometimes running a vacancy, filling with overtime. A lot of the budget where you'll see that it was due to timing and projects that were deferred will be rebudgeted in this in this fiscal year. The revenue variances, again, to the good, we got about $1.6 million more than we expected. And that really is due to, I think, recovering revenues from the pandemic. They recovered a little bit faster than we expected. We did obviously budget conservatively, so that that is actually a nice result. So as a result, for the end of fiscal year 22, we did have a very good general fund balance of $16.3 million. However, as I mentioned, a lot of those savings were due to projects that were deferred or rollover. So in this fiscal year 2223, the general fund is expected to spend about $3.6 million than the revenue this year. But again, not unexpected because they're due to timing issues. So we expect, again, with this budget, to end fiscal year 23 with an estimated $13 million of general fund reserves, and that is 69% of this of the expenses. And that is well over the target of the 60% that the council has spent, I'm sorry, has set. So that is about $1.7 million over the target. There are a number of additions. There aren't as many, but we have adjusted. Some of the property tax has been adjusted slightly based on the projections. And you heard from our consultant, Thomas from Avenue Services. I believe it was at the last meeting. Most notably, projections for sales tax have been adjusted downward slightly, especially over the next five years. You see that adjustment in our five-year model. So you'll see in this staff report, this is the difference between what had been projected in the proposed budget versus what is now in the final budget. The other large change is for the purchase of the two properties. We have transferred $5.2 million from City Offices Fund to public facilities. That is a loan from the City Offices Fund. And then we also transferred another $1.7 million from the general fund towards that purchase. Over the next several months, the council will be talking about potential uses for those properties. And that will also be sort of intertwined with how the council wants to ultimately finance those particular purchases. Let us see, there is one other change that is actually a correction from the staff report. We are asking that the Economic Development Management manager position be extended for another six months. That's at a cost of $80,000, not $180,000, which is in the staff report. So I would like to make that correction. Um, so I would like to make that correction, uh, when you do your uh. In, in my recommendation, uh, let's see, what else? Uh, the other change that's made again is that we have now started to release some of the ARPA money that was held from the first tranche that was allocated to uh. The revenue losses, I believe there was eight, roughly eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars uh, that we put into a sinking fund. Um, last year, the council directed that we use that money over the next four years, basically to uh. To bridge the gap, uh, specifically for the downtown core area maintenance, and this is and a way that we're using those funds to um. Help sustain the downtown, so it falls squarely within, uh, I believe the ARPA guidelines. And uh, it helps the five-year model. The one thing I did want to mention, this is not new. Um, but it's continuing is that you will see that over the next five years. Uh, based on our projections, there are, there are ongoing deficits between revenues and expenses. Um. It, uh, in the first four years, uh, primarily because we did, are, are going to be releasing those ARPA funds. The deficit is still about five hundred thousand dollars a year. You'll see that by twenty-six, twenty-seven, that deficit increases to about seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Uh, we have not yet allocated all of the second tranche of ARPA funds. Uh, the committee will continue to meet and consider how we uh, could possibly use those funds to bridge some of the other funding gaps, which you are very familiar. So, uh, in a nutshell, we will, as I said, be considering this again, um, on January ninth. And that is my presentation, and I'm happy to take any specific questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll do questions from the council and then we'll open it up for public comments or questions and then come back for discussion. Does anyone have any uh, questions for Tracy? We've seen none, uh, we'll open it for a public comment. Suzanne, is there anyone who wants to make a comment or ask a question?
Um, if anyone would like to comment at this time, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now. Mayor, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're back to discussion. Uh, any comments before we go forward? We'll need a motion to approve the six-month extension for the Economic Development Manager, uh, in the amount of eighty thousand dollars paid out of the second tranche. Is there any discussion about that? Councilmember Candell.
Just a, a quick uh, comment. Are we gonna um, talk about the department work plans? As part of this, or is that a separate, because Nurep was gonna be here for the department work pens. Are we gonna talk about that now? Or?
Now's the time to do that, yeah. It's in the material.
Great, okay, so I, I do have a question on the department work plan. Um, so one of the things that was, has been brought up a bunch of times was getting new downtown objective standards. Um, and I didn't see that on the work. At least I don't think I saw on the work plans. I looked pretty hard, but I, I, where does that land?
Um, it is not in the current planning department's work plan. That was uh, presented to you, I think in May of this year. However, when uh, planning comes back to you at, uh, at the start of the next fiscal year, and depending on what priorities you set, uh, we will amend that work plan to incorporate uh, the objective design standards as uh, you indicate, Councilmember Candell. Uh, the council did talk about it at the last meeting, and you all stressed the need and importance of doing uh, the uh. Uh, of preparing these objective standards after the adoption of the housing. So that's, we are fully aware of that.
Perfect, thank you.
Other comments, questions? Vice Mayor Dawson.
I just wanted to acknowledge, I, I did uh, reach out to City Manager um, Sravatsa about the um, priority we have for wildfire prevention and utility safety, to acknowledge the work that um, we have been doing through various channels with our emergency preparation coordinator, uh, John Cornell with PG&E in terms of um, all the work he's been doing in, in terms of, of prep and, and with PG&E and, uh, with the alerts and camera work, and also I believe there's training that PG&E reaches out to do or should be doing. So I just want to acknowledge that work as well as the additional work that um, Public Works has also applied via inspections for gas uh, pipeline safety with the testing and uh, and uh, maintenance work that has been doing, that, being done. So I just want to make sure that that was acknowledged. And the work to date, staff's done an amazing job as well as our emergency prep commission in uh, propping that up as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? I think we're ready for a motion. Well, fir- first we need, uh, Councilmember Candell.
I was gonna make the motion, or do you want to go to public comment?
No, no, we've had.
Oh, that's right, we did, that's right. Um, I'll make the motion that we approve a six-month extension for eighty thousand dollars for the, the Economic Development Manager contract paid out of the second tranche of ARPA funds.
And I will second it. Garringer.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Candell, seconded by Councilmember Garringer. We'll take the roll call vote. Councilmember Candell.
Aye.
Councilmember Garringer.
Aye.
Councilmember Quoc.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dawson.
Aye.
And I'm an I, so it's five oh. And uh, need a motion now to continue this item to the January ninth meeting. Councilmember Candell.
So moved.
Second, moved by Councilmember Candell, seconded by Councilmember Quoc, um, Councilmember Candell.
Aye.
Councilmember Garringer.
Aye.
Councilmember Quoc.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dawson.
Aye.
And I'm an I, so that's five oh. All right, we're on to item ten B, update on hybrid meeting solutions, and um. Will Ms. Erla present?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, my name is Susannah Erla. I'm the city's communications analyst. I'm happy to have my camera on and be presenting to you uh, during this meeting. Um, the last update I provided to the council on hybrid meeting solutions was back in March. So tonight, I wanted to give you updates on the hybrid meeting solutions that we've been working on. Certain state laws, uh, regarding public meetings um, and the current health orders, and then seek direction from the council on staff's recommendations regarding returning to in-person meetings. Um, so first of all, regarding uh, the equipment update that we've put into uh, a, a number of rooms. Uh, staff did receive direction from council, uh, more than a year ago in September of twenty-twenty-one to create and implement hybrid meeting solutions for public meetings in the Don Tatson Community Hall and in the Arts and Science Discovery Center, um, at the library. And so the, the groups that meet in those two rooms are the City Council, the Planning Commission, the Design Review Commission, and the Transportation and Circulation Commission, which is also sometimes called TransCirc. Um, so the improvements that we have made to those two rooms are detailed in the written staff reports. Um, but in general, the, we have installed the AV and broadcasting equipment in the community hall. And uh, city staff and the library crew were testing and refining that hybrid broadcasting system, but we are uh, confident that when you're ready to return to uh, in-person meetings in that room and want to have a hybrid meeting uh, that we'll be able to accommodate that. The Arts and Science Room, um, isn't fully completed yet, um, but it, it would still be functional. Um, at this time, we do want to make additional changes such as changing the um projection screen in the room to a large monitor that's mounted on the wall. Um, but we can make do with what's in the room right now as we complete those, those changes. Um, the systems were designed to accommodate city public meetings, but we also did take into account other users of those rooms, including the Library Foundation and their renters. Um, and I did have one correction to the written staff report, um, in regards to the HVAC system, um, related to the community hall. Um, the staff report, uh, had a, something that was incorrect, and the community hall does currently have MIR fourteen filters. Um, and then in the, in the staff report, uh, it is correct that staff has not yet undertaken the tests on the current system to see if HEPA filtration could be added or not to the existing system. Um, so next I wanted to talk really briefly about um, state laws that uh, dictate, uh, you know, some aspects of public meetings. Um, so as you are all familiar, uh, the Brown Act provides, uh, you know, rules related to public meetings. And even pre-pandemic, the Brown Act did allow for teleconferencing for legislative body members, such as council members um, to participate in public meetings, and those um. Rules are still available, um, those are still in effect, and that would require that teleconferencing locations are identified in the agenda. And there is an agenda posted at that teleconferencing location. The location must be open to the public for someone to observe the meeting or to provide public comments. And that location must also meet, uh, the accessibility requirements for the public to be able to attend the meeting in that location. Uh, when the pandemic happened back in March twenty-twenty, the governor did issue an executive order that temporarily allowed uh, cities and other legislative bodies to hold meetings via teleconferencing without um those locations being open and accessible to the public. Uh, that executive order expired in September, at the end of September twenty-twenty-one and was replaced on October one of last year with Assembly Bill uh, three sixty-one. Assembly Bill three sixty-one temporarily allows local agencies to continue to meet virtually and remotely during a proclaimed emergency, and that uh. Proclamation of an emergency must be affirmed monthly that it is continuing. And Assembly Bill three sixty-one does say if technical problems arise, the result in the public not being able to access the online meeting uh, that, then no other action could be taken during that meeting until it's resolved. Uh, that assembly bill is still in effect and will sunset January one of twenty-twenty-four. Um, so uh, all of twenty-twenty-three, that bill would still be in effect and able to be utilized if there is a continued state of emergency. Uh, there is a new assembly bill, uh, twenty-four forty-nine, and uh, this is new since our last update to you. Um, and it is also further detailed in the written staff report. Like AB three sixty-one, it requires there to be a proclaimed emergency and that no further action could be taken during the meeting if there was a technical disruption. It does allow for relaxed teleconferencing rules for a member of a legislative body. Um, if they need to attend remotely for an emergency or other very specific scenarios. Um, and folks can only use a limited number of times in each year. Um, we do anticipate that to be a rare occurrence because it's uh, worded very specifically when it could be utilized. And it does require that that teleconference location where the legislative body member is participating from be listed on the agenda. Uh, so next I'd like to just uh, touch bases on where we are with health orders. So back in October, uh, Contra Costa County's Health Officer rescinded the county's COVID emergency health orders. And at the time, they referenced the availability of vaccinations and treatments and the low trends in the county that were happening at that time. And the same week, the governor announced that the state's COVID nineteen state of emergency is planned to end on February twenty-eighth twenty-twenty-three, so in just a couple of months. And so that's why staff's recommendation refers to the date of March one, twenty-twenty-three. Um, staff is recommending that the city council and all advisory bodies should plan to resume in-person meetings by March one, twenty-twenty-three, and that is assuming that there's no relevant health order in place um, at the state or county level, uh, that impacts indoor public gatherings. Um, but for the assumption of a discussion tonight, uh, we wanted to assume that that would be the case. Staff does recommend that a hybrid meeting option uh, be offered uh, as a convenience and auxiliary to the in-person meetings, regular meetings of the City Council, Planning Commission, Design Review, and TransCirc. Um, but due to the additional staff time required to set up and manage a hybrid meeting, we are not recommending a hybrid meeting option for regular meetings of any other advisory bodies at this time. In this scenario, um, members of the public would be encouraged to attend the meeting in person or submit written comments in advance. And as a courtesy and technology permitting, uh, they would be able to provide live, remote, oral public comment via Zoom teleconference. Um, so that would be a change to um, what we are doing now during wholly online meetings, uh, where the remote comments from the public would be audio only, um, with no video or screen sharing. Um, that is really to kind of simplify both the process and the complexity um, of what needs to happen in order to facilitate that during a public, during a hybrid meeting, I apologize. Um, staff and consultants, however, uh, would be able to participate remotely with video and screen sharing capabilities um, for their uh, presentations, which are typically longer than a uh, public comment. Um. In terms of the hybrid meetings being offered as a convenience and auxiliary to the in-person meetings, uh, we would make clear to the public that, you know, technical difficulties could occur from time to time, and those are typically outside of the city's control, and so we can't guarantee the public's online access uh, would be uninterrupted, and uh, staff may be not even aware if there is uh, a power or internet service outage impacting a portion of town. Um, so therefore, we do recommend that the remote participation, AKA the hybrid portion, uh, be offered as a convenience to the in-person meeting. Um, here tonight to receive direction from you on the staff recommendation, and I welcome any questions you have. Thank you.
Okay, questions? Councilmember Quoc.
Yeah, thank you for the very clear and detailed report as well as your summary just now. Uh, my question is, uh, which bodies are affected? You mentioned all advisory bodies, so I imagine that includes uh, all the Environmental Task Force, the Emergencies Prepared, you know, all, all of them are going back in person. Uh, no later than March first of next year, is that correct?
Yeah, so any advisory body that um, is required to follow the Brown Act, so even a, a subcommittee that does need to follow the Brown Act and have public agendized meetings, um, that would be all, all the other advisory bodies I've mentioned.
Okay, and in those, um, those that are not going in to have the meeting at the library in the Don Tatson Community Hall, which would be uh, the Planning Commission, the Design Review Commission, and TransCirc and the City Council, aside for those four which would conduct business in a hybrid format, uh, is it correct to say that the other sessions would be in-person only? And then I wasn't quite sure whether you, when you said, maybe, would they still have a Zoom connection and people's ability to call in or not?
No, so staff is recommending it is in-person only, no Zoom capability for those other advisory bodies. Just the four that you mentioned, the Planning Commission and City Council who meet in the community hall and DRC and TransCirc that meet in arts and science. So the recommendation is that all of the other advisory bodies just meet in person, no Zoom. Uh. The ability to call in.
The public who would want to participate would either need to come in person or write their comments in advance, right? Those would be the two methods.
Yes.
And then how about GPAC?
Um, so GPAC is an advisory body to the city council, so um, the recommendation before you as it stands tonight would include them with the other advisory bodies. Um, we do have the capability, both in the two rooms mentioned, as, as well as the availability to move some mobile equipment into other rooms. So if GPAC had a community town hall, something different than their regular monthly meeting of members that they wanted additional outreach, I think there could be the opportunity to utilize hybrid meetings on a case-by-case basis. Um, similar to if we were holding a, a town hall, those types of meetings do require more, more staff time and attention, but it is a way to get uh, more concentrated community engagement, so that would be a possibility.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Candell.
Thank you. Um, Suzanne, thank you. Great, um, report. Uh, everybody who worked on this and all the work that's been going on in the background, just great. Um, I do have a question. What, can you help me understand why having just the audio versus the audio plus the visual for the people on the hybrid parts of meetings? Explain me why the difference in cost.
Um, so there's not a difference in cost, there's a difference in like the number of actions, the staff who are running the Zoom meeting and who are running the cameras and the displays. and the displays um have to take during the meeting. Um, it also takes a little bit longer, um, as you know, from these online meetings that we have, when we have someone uh providing a public comment, myself or Joanne will invite them to come in as a panelist. On their end, they have to click that invitation. Depending on their signal strength, they come in, sometimes they have to turn on their video, it just takes a lot longer to bring each person in. Um, and I've actually observed a number of other uh meetings from some other cities in doing research, and a lot of them have oral-only public comments, and it can be immediate. We could say the next person to speak is so-and-so. They get unmuted and they can kind of almost instantly uh talk and provide their public comments to the council, so it would make for more efficient public comment. It makes the uh tasks a little bit simpler for staff. And then um adding video is always more complex, so I guess there, you know, be kind of more chance for error with additional video on, but it's not so much a cost as much as um the number of tasks staff has to do.
Great, so um, but letting the people in and having them have their video on or off, it's still the same steps, right? You still have to invite them into the meeting, they still have to transfer over.
No, um, actually in Zoom, it is, it is different steps and it takes less steps and less time. It's also a little bit easier for someone who's not familiar with Zoom because they can actually just start talking right away. They don't have to accept the invitation to be a panelist, lose about three seconds while they're transitioning over, unmute themselves and turn their camera on, so it's a lot of steps, um, which obviously a lot of our uh community are, are well-versed in doing, but we do have folks that are new to Zoom that struggle with that sometimes. So it would make um just for an easier flow and, and more efficiency, um, if the public comments were oral-only, uh, the ones that were taken remotely.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, I, I have a question then for, for you and also for the city attorney, uh, perhaps. Um, let's say that the, the governor's order uh lapses as planned on February twenty-eighth, but the Contra Costa Health Officer, uh, as a result of a COVID surge, renews the advice that public bodies um meet by Zoom. In that case, uh, would we have the capability to decide to continue to meet not just the council, but all um of our public bodies uh by Zoom?
Yes, Assembly Bill three sixty-one, uh, would allow that uh to happen if there was a uh local emergency uh that impacted that. And that bill allows those meetings to happen uh through January one of twenty twenty-four, so all of twenty twenty-three, uh, we would be able to utilize that bill and hold meetings. And that's actually the bill we're using now to hold this meeting. Um, but there does have to be a proclaimed state of emergency.
Okay, so I'll ask this as a question. One way we could proceed would be to be ready on March first, but uh if circumstances changed, uh, we could, we would have the ability then to, if there were the advice from the health officer, uh, we would have the ability to stay as we are.
Yes, you're correct.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any other questions before we? Okay, we'll open it to public comment.
Okay. Um, if any members of the public would like to comment on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now. Mayor, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, well, I know that we did receive at least uh one public comment on this item asking that we consider to uh broaden this, so I think all of us have read that or are aware of it, so we'll keep that in mind as we discuss. Uh, but uh we're being asked now to give direction uh to staff. Um, how do you feel about this? Councilmember Quoc.
Well, I think this is a very thoughtful and practical approach that balances cost and staffing time, right? Uh, it, it takes more staffing time and cost to do the hybrid version uh with the reality of the situation. I mean, I, I wish that all um, um, that the public could attend virtually on all of our commissions as they do today. It is an expansion of democracy that I've seen in the last two years, three years. That's wonderful for society, uh, to not have to go downtown if you're, uh, you want to make a comment or you want to listen in on our, the committees that are not the four that will be broadcasting by hybrid. So I, I, I regret seeing that, but I understand that, you know, if we were going to do that, that's a big lift staff-wise, and it's not just a matter of the chair of that commission bringing their laptop, flipping it open and doing a Zoom because, you know, we'd have to provide some consistency to ensure the public could really attend, and there's, there's just a lot of complexity to do that well and consistently. So I understand that it's a big lift to have all of, to be able to hybridize all of our commissions, although I, I wish in the ideal world, we could do that to have the public participate remotely. But otherwise, I think this is a recommendation I can support, uh, because it's, it's a practical aspect of how we would move forward in March. And we can always change later, but I think as a first step for March first, this is uh achievable and uh practical for us. So I, I support it as, as is, e- even though I, I would aspire to something different later.
Councilmember Garrick.
Um, so I see someone has their hand up now, and I know we just went through and no one raised their hands. I don't know if we want to make that exception this time, so um.
Well, I think we can do that. Um, if, if uh there's no objection, we'll hear the public comment and then come back to you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Sharon Farley, uh, would like to make a comment at this time.
Um, I strongly recommend that you have the hybrid meetings for as many of the um meetings as possible. I know that personally, um, I really think that I would not attend as many meetings if they were all in person. So I strongly recommend that we continue Zoom. Thank you.
Yeah, are there any questions from Ms. Farley? Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Garrick.
So um, with, with all due respect, I um, I, I agree with um Councilmember Quoc that in the ideal world, um, we would have the continued um Zoom hybrid options for all of the bodies, um, and actually be able to have some of them continue to be um on Zoom sort of all together, even with the commissioners, because um it has been an increase in public engagement over the last um several years. But I also appreciate that um the going back at some point is also a part of our democracy and having us, um, you know, be in person. And since we are looking at uh the emergency orders ending and us going back in person, I do think that um looking at the cost aspect of this, the way that uh Suzanne and staff have done, um, brings me to be willing to support this recommendation. I appreciate Councilmember Quoc noting that uh as we get going again in person and with our hybrid um option with our um committees that have been recommended, um, we can change later and we can come back and potentially change within the um requirements around public meeting laws, but look again at the cost effectiveness or if technology has changed to be able to uh provide more open access. But I'm also um leaning, willing to support the staff recommendation.
Any other thoughts or Councilmember Candell?
Uh, yeah, the same as Councilmember Garrick and Councilmember Quoc. It, it is, as long as we, we go, we try it, we see the public outcry or yes or no, right? And, and be willing to modify if we need to. I can support that.
Vice Mayor Dawson.
I would concur with my fellow council members, um, because I do think it's important to, even from the standpoint of our commissioners who come to these meetings and who have um been, you know, experiencing this capability of, of making the meetings remotely. It, it's, it's an impact on, on them as well. Um, so appreciating that and um acknowledging as, as Councilmember Quoc mentioned, that we'll um adjust as we go along, iterate and, and see how that works out.
Okay, well, I, I probably come at this from a little different angle from the rest of you. I've had a chance to talk about this to, to staff, but uh I personally don't look forward to the end of the uh uh order because I think it's just much safer for the community. And it's worked out really well uh for the public to be able to, I mean, we have thirty-seven participants on the call now, uh, people are able to, uh, I think more people are able to participate than would if they had to come down to uh the Tatsin Community Hall. I know with each and every one of our committees and commissions, I'm pretty confident we've got more people at these meetings on a more regular basis because they can do it by Zoom. And I think we've operated at a fairly high level in terms of uh each of the commissions, whether it's public arts, uh, the crime prevention, all, all the commissions have, have operated really well by Zoom. So I, I have to warn you, if uh, if the county health uh officer does say uh that it does provide the advice, I'm going to be in favor of us staying with Zoom as long as we can do it, because I think it's really worked out well for involvement within the community. The only other thing I would mention, and I appreciate Zerla raising it, you know, one of the reasons we got ARPA funds uh was so that we could uh use those to fund improvements in public buildings, uh, particularly with respect to uh filtration and circulation of air to eliminate, was referred to as the invisible bridge uh for the COVID virus. And so I, I depreciate it. Uh, Suzanne, if uh in the next month or so, you can work with uh Brian and the library, particularly on the Tatsin Room, but also the Arts and Sciences Room, just to make sure to see if, 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 again, I, uh, just saying I'm open to it. If we need to spend ARPA funds to provide higher filtration and better circulation in the main, in the rooms where our people are going to be meeting, I think we should do that. So I, I think we should know uh with some accuracy uh what the, the situation is in, in those rooms. So I'd look forward to a, a follow-up report on that. But I think, I think we've all said what we need to say, we're moving ahead uh with the staff recommendation and uh I just asked that, um, Suzanne, bring it, if anything changes, if there are any developments, uh, bring it back to us.
Certainly, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for a great report. Okay, we're on now to item eleven A.
Can we take a break?
Oh, are we? Yes, we can. So we'll be back at nine o'clock.
Thank you.
I will stop screen sharing now.
All right, it's nine o'clock. We're back. We're now on item eleven A. Immediately after this item, we will take up items removed from the consent calendar, eight A, eight B, and eight I. So I'll turn it over to Tracy Robinson, our Administrative Services Director, to present eleven A.
Sorry. Oh, there I am. Thank you. Actually, we do have a couple of people coming over. I don't know if you want to bring those people over, Suzanne. They could raise, if you're in the audience, if you could raise your hand, we can bring you over. But let me quickly just give you the overview and then you can ask questions. So the item before you is consideration of joining the California Municipal Financing Authority and adopting the Bold Financing Program for the creation of Community Facilities Districts. So basically what this is, is the CMFA is a Joint Powers Authority that was designed to allow developers to borrow money via bond program to pay for their, to pay for their impact fees when they build a project within the city. So the impact fees, the advantages of a program like this is that the impact fees would be paid upfront to the city instead of over time as building permits are issued. Now, want to be clear, the impact fees are due regardless, but this is again a way for developers to pay those fees sooner rather than later. There is one caveat in that those fees would need to be expended within three years of the date the bonds are issued. If they're issued on a tax exempt basis. So we do want to consider whether or not we would be able to spend those fees within that period of time. The city is normally used to getting fees, especially from larger developments over time, so that we can space out our ability to spend those funds. The other thing that this program does basically is the developer takes out bonds to pay the fees and then the payback for that bond is transferred to the homeowner of that particular project. So that is something that is different. The city has not ever embarked on something like this. So it is important to understand that property owners in these specific districts in these developments would have a tax on their property in addition to the 1% ad valorem tax and the other taxes that appear on their property tax bill. So that is also something different that the city has not done or considered before. So the council will need to consider whether or not that's something that they want to do. The other advantage, at least from the developer's point of view, is that it may be attractive to developers to be able to pay for their fees in this way. So it would definitely be possibly an incentive for developers. So that is a very brief overview. We do have, let's see, we have Dennis McGuire and David Fama here, who can speak a little bit more to the specifics and they may have some additional comments about the program that I haven't necessarily included in my brief overview. So Dennis, did you have additional comments that you wanted to bring to the attention? I know that I know that the city council members have been briefed on this individually, but maybe for the benefit of the community, you might want to add something if you have it.
Sure, I'll just, Tracy did a great job on the overview and good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about the program. The one thing that Tracy mentioned is this program is based on the Melo-Ruse law, which is a law in California that allows for a Community Facilities District or a Special Taxing District to be formed and voted on by the property owners within that specific specific geographic boundary. And so it's not a tax that would be on the entire city or a large portion of the city. It would be specific to a given project. And so that Community Facilities District is legally formed through an election of the property owners within that district. Oftentimes for a new development project, there will usually only be one elector being the developer and owner of all of the property within that district. As Tracy mentioned, that the tax or the district is formed, a tax is identified at the time of formation, a maximum dollar tax amount for the property within that district. Also, the time period for which that tax can be levied is also identified at the time of the election. And that tax stays with the property over the life of the CFD. The property owner can prepay that tax to remove that lien, but by and large, it does not need to be paid off at the time that a home is sold or that a condominium is sold. It stays with the property like any other property tax. The taxes themselves are an additional line item on the property owner's property tax bill, clearly identified in this case to the CMFA special tax. And those are kind of just a few, and then a few other things is, as Tracy mentioned, when a property owner does look to have bonds issued to fund their portion of the impact fees, for smaller projects, this is why we do it through a Joint Powers Authority, is we're able to pool that financing with multiple other small financings throughout the state in order to have a much larger financing, which is better received by investors. And so that's just kind of some, maybe some additional color that I wanted to provide. Dave Fama, who is legal counsel on the program, I don't know if there was some additional information that you wanted to provide as well.
Actually, both of you, could you give your affiliation before we go further?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Dennis McGuire with Piper Sandler, we are the bond underwriter on the CMFA Bold Program.
Yeah, and good evening, Dave Fama here. I'm with a law firm in San Francisco, Jones Hall, and we do, exclusively do, you know, bond work, which includes these kind of districts that are, you know, basically bonding districts. So yeah, stated most simply, this is just, the city would be outsourcing something that it could do on its own, you know, creation of one of these districts and issuance of bonds, which are secured by the special taxes that the district levies. You would be outsourcing that to CMFA under this program that they have in place that's been highly successful. Many cities participate. And basically, CMFA just, you know, handles the whole, the whole thing for you. Basically, you approve the project, you know, you approve the go-ahead. And once CMFA, which is, you know, Joint Powers Authority, that's got, you know, two or I think almost three hundred at this point, members, you know, cities and counties in the state. Once you tell them, yeah, we're okay with it, and that would be at staff level, after the council approves participation in the program generally, then CMFA, you know, kind of runs with it. And the city can be as involved as they want to be or not. The city can, you know, approve each step of the way. That's not typical, but if you really wanted to be involved heavily in it, you could be. But basically, you're relieving yourself of, you know, staff time and so forth by essentially outsourcing it to CMFA. All the costs are borne by the developer. You're, you're sort of just, you know, cooperating with the developer in obtaining some financing through tax exempt bonds. So the actions before you would be one to join the CMFA. There's no liability in joining, as I said, two hundred and some odd, you know, cities in the state are members. CMFA basically is a Joint Powers Authority that is available for issuance of bonds and other financings. They do a lot of affordable housing deals and so forth. So you would be joining CMFA and then authorizing project by project approval of participation in this program by staff is the way it basically has been set up and most typically run. So that's kind of the overview and the two actions tonight, if you so choose, would be to join CMFA and then authorize the program, you know, basically. And then from that point, it would be up to someone at staff level to approve individual applications. So if there's any questions, we can answer them. It kind of is, you might be more familiar with the assessment, you know, assessment districts, and this is very similar.
Okay, we'll take questions from the council and then we'll go to public comment and then come back for discussion. Councilmember Quoc.
I think there are two other members of the applicants out in the waiting room. Would we want to bring them into the meeting? Tracy?
Well, I'm going to ask Dennis and David, so waiting are Mike Whipple and Perry Hariri. Would you like them to come in? I don't know if they'll have, I'm not sure specifically what their affiliations are if council, if it may be useful to have them in the meeting.
I believe that's the developer and the developer's representative for one of the projects who would like to use this.
So we're not, just to be clear, considering a project at this meeting. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask the mayor if that's, if you want to just talk about the first part, which is we deliberately but broke it into two two sections. One is just the idea of the program and then at a later date, we'll be getting a more, probably an application from a developer, but it's your, it's up to you.
Right, I think, I think we can, we can hear from Mr. Hariri, Mr. Whipple in the public comment if they want to tell us how they would be using this, that that would be a good time. So we're back to, Councilmember Quoc, did you have?
No, that, I was just, wanted to double check about that.
Okay, great. Vice Mayor Dawson.
I just went into disclosures for full transparency. The way I was initially educated about this was through the Lafayette Lane Project and Patty Curtins specifically set up that meeting so we can get that information. So I just wanted to mention that, especially as Mr. Hariri is here. So thank you.
I think, I think all of us have had those discussions, so the public know that we've each had a discussion like that. Okay, Councilmember Candell.
Sorry. So, um, thank you for the presentation. The, I have two questions. Has this ever, you know, this, this method, this strategy, has it ever like fallen apart? Like, has it ever, has there been an example in a city where they did this and it just, for whatever reason, it all fell apart? And the city, who's liable in that situation or what kind of exposure do we have? That's the first question. And the second one is, on this project, I guess we're not discussing it directly, but about how much per unit extra cost will the new residents see? Just a swag, you know, range would be fine.
So I can jump in on the first one. And so there is, the security here, it, for the bonds, is the tax on the individual properties. And so almost all of these CFDs are set up with accelerated foreclosure provisions because it is not a lien on the property owner, it's a lien on the property itself. And so in the event of non-payment, the issuer covenants to begin accelerated foreclosure proceedings, much like the county would in the event of non-ad valorem property tax payments, although the county would typically wait five years for CFDs. The legal documents are usually written so that depending on the amount of the delinquencies, it could occur within one year. And normally that would be undertaken by the issuer. So would it be the city in the event of the, if the city was the issuer on behalf of the CFD? In this instance, it would be CMFA who is the issuer on behalf of the CFD. So that would be in the event of non-payment, in the event of trying to remedy a problem on the bonds. For CMFA Bold, we have not, again, the program's been around for three years. We have not had that issue in in having to foreclose on any properties. By and large, the CFD market itself in California, outside of CMFA, just the amount of CFDs that are done by cities, counties, school districts, special districts throughout the state. The default rate and the amount of missed payments is very low. And, you know, by and large, if, once these projects are built and you have a completed home or completed condominium building, oftentimes the value of that property is far in excess of the amount of taxes that are being paid on it. And these are a tax lien that do have, you know, a lien prior to any private lien. And so, you know, by and large, these, these CFDs throughout the state have performed very well. But there is always that risk and the, and, and, and the way to correct it would be through foreclosure. But again, that would be done through CMFA, not through the city in this instance.
What about the second question?
Chime in, Councilmember Candell, I believe in the staff report I mentioned, we did get a sort of a pro forma, these aren't exact numbers that we got from the Lafayette Lane Program. Note that we got these numbers in the summer. And things and rates have changed since then, so these numbers may be different, but I think, given all the facilities fees, so the city is not the only entity that charges impact fees, there's utility impact fees and whatnot, but I believe at the time they estimated that it would be about thirty-eight hundred dollars a year on the individual, on these particular properties.
Thank you.
And the way that these districts work is that the total tax burden doesn't exceed two percent. It usually actually doesn't exceed 1.8%. So the 1%, you know, normal tax, and then there might be, you know, some GO bonds or school district bonds or whatever. But the way that they, they come out is that we won't let the total tax burden exceed 1.8% of the home price. So that thirty-eight hundred is probably, you know, for the home prices in your area. Um, so that thirty eight hundred i- is probably, you know, for the ho- home prices in your area, i- is probably pretty common. I know there's a CFD at Wa- on Wilder Ranch in Arinda. Um, and I think that's about the level that they're at. It's something that basically is kind of backed into to get to that one point seven, one point eight percent target.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Councilmember Garrington.
So can, continuing on that, so the, that pro forma thirty eight hundred, that includes currently all of the things that are on our current tax bills plus the fee that would be charged or the thirty eight hundred is on top of the two thousand thirty five sixty eight that that some properties in Lafayette might be playing on with additional school bonds and parcel taxes and all of those. I wanted to understand that number.
I believe it's on top.
Okay. Okay. And then you just mentioned that Wilder has a CFD, um, but are there any, um, CMFA, um, projects or, uh, JPAs in the Bay Area? I saw that, I looked on the site and saw the other projects, um, but couldn't specifically see something in the Bay Area.
Yeah, the Bay Area is, um, largely, you know, built out, I mean, more so than where we do most of these transactions, which is in the Sacramento area and the Central Valley, um, you know, where housing is, new housing is, uh, more robust, you know, than, than the Bay Area. Um, Wilder Ranch was done by the city itself. It was done prior to the existence of this program. And, uh, so, you know, there was, there was no outsourcing there, but, but the bottom line creation of a CFD and payment of the taxes is the same as we would be doing here. Um, Dennis, can you think of any Bay Area cities? Um, I know there's some with CFDs, but I, I'm not sure that CMFA has done them in the last three years.
Yeah, not CMFA, but, um, I think Dave, you, you're correct in that a lot, CFDs are often used where there's a lot of high growth going on. But in the Bay Area, San Francisco has used CFDs, um, on some of the projects in Treasure Island. Some of the new projects going on down in the, uh, the Transbay area. Um, and in a few other areas as well. So, um, you know, that's one off the top of my head that I know has, has been using, uh, CFDs for a lot of their new projects. Um, as you get out, you know, a little bit further, uh, Tracy has been using CFDs quite a bit lately. Uh, again, some more of those kind of high growth areas.
And our firm is currently working on CFDs in Alameda, um, San Leandro, Newark. Um, again, by, done by the cities, not, not through the program.
Okay, Vice Mayor Dawson.
I just wanted to follow up on that. I think, um, where I, the, the research, some of the small researches I've done, these programs are uh, primarily for affordable housing and cities getting behind building units for affordable housing. Um, so I'm wondering, um, we're looking at market rate, um, particularly in the project that was first raised in, in relation to this. Is there a, um, do you know of, of cities that are doing this kind of thing for market rate? As opposed to the, some of the products, I think most of the products you mentioned are for affordable housing, like Albany and Sacramento.
Um, well, most of the CFDs are done for market rate housing, not for affordable housing. Um, CMFA does a lot of affordable housing transactions. But those are, those are not CFDs. That's not part of the bold program. That's a specific type of financing for specifically for affordable housing. But the, the CFDs themselves are, are by and large done for, for market rate housing.
Okay, thanks for that distinction.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions? Or, uh, Councilmember Quoc.
Yeah, I have two questions. Number one, uh, either for, for Tracy or uh, our guest is, um, you mentioned that, that if we issue a tax free, if we go the tax-free bond route, that there's a three-year time, um, table, right, uh, uh, deadline. Um, but does that imply that if we went with a taxable bond, that it's something different than a three-year?
I believe, I believe that's true. Um, Dennis, yeah, is it?
Yeah, that's correct. It's really, it's a, it's a Dave question because he's the one who's got to provide the, the opinion that says whether bonds are taxable or tax exempt. But that, and we have done those for, um, through CMFA, through the bold program. We've done taxable CFD bonds. When, um, it's possible that the, the, the use of those proceeds may extend beyond three years. Um, or it's not guaranteed that they will be spent within three years. And so we've issued taxable bonds and that gives a little bit more flexibility on the timing of the use because it's not just, and, and Dave can touch on this more, it's not just the pulling of the building permit that means that the funds are expended. It's those funds actually being expended on capital tax-exempt public projects.
Yeah, and procedurally, that's not something that, um, n- n- needs to be covered, you know, with this initial approval. What happens is when the CFD is formed and then oftentimes the bonds won't be issued for, say, a year later. That's pretty typical. So at the time, bonds are going to be issued. We will come back to you, the city, and say, okay, the developer is wanting, uh, bonds to be issued at this point in time. It would generate, you know, say three million dollars in proceeds. The developer wants to use those proceeds to pay impact fees. We would then ask the question, before we issue bonds, can you, the city, you know, s- say or foresee that you would expect to be able to spend those proceeds within three years? If you say, you know, yes, we don't see any problem with that, then we would move ahead with tax-exempt bonds. If you say that, well, we could probably expend two, but maybe not three, we would probably do two million of tax-exempt and one million of taxable. So at the time, bonds are issued, that, uh, that puzzle is worked out. And, uh, and generally it's, you know, it's not an issue. It's just a decision whether the bonds would have to go taxable or tax exempt. If they go taxable, it's a slightly higher interest rate, which gives a, a slightly less amount of proceeds to the developer, but nonetheless, the transaction is, is still doable. Um, if the city wasn't comfortable with moving forward with bonds at all at that point, the city could say, you know what, we're, we're really, you know, n- not comfortable with the, the structure of these bonds or the special tax or whatever. And, you know, we would call it off if need be, but, you know, generally try and work it out.
Thank you, thank you. I think you answered a couple of my follow-up questions, which was namely, if we take action today, uh, to take this first step, that we have optionality of either doing taxable or tax-free instruments. And that if we did a tax-free one, there would be a three-year deadline, but a tax taxable instrument, did you say it was five years or was it longer?
I think, I think it's five years. Again, I just want to be clear. It's not like forever. There's also a time limit on all of the impacts regardless of if they're financed or not. I mean, if they just pay us.
Yeah, I, but we have, we have, we would have optionality at a later time that we don't have to decide today. And then my second question is, what is the delta between a taxable, a tax-free bond and a a taxable bond today? Maybe that's for Mr. McGuire.
Well, right now it's pretty wide, as you can imagine, um, with what's going on in all, all interest rate markets. Um, with, a- as, as rates go higher, the spreads widen out between tax-exempt and taxable. And so I think, you know, again, and the market has been quite volatile. Um, so don't hold me to anything, but yeah, I think you're going to be well north of a hundred basis point, probably closer to a hundred and fifty basis point spread between uh, tax-exempt and taxable for the same credit. Uh, if this was a year ago, that spread would be significantly tighter.
Okay. Uh, so the difference between five percent to six percent or six point five percent, that's a hundred or a hundred and fifty basis points?
Yeah, I think unfortunately both of those are probably even a little bit further out in, in this, in this market, but yeah, I, e- e- exactly, I think. They're, are a little bit higher, um, in this market, but yeah, I think that's going to be, you know, about the difference. Um, but in this market, it the, the market for taxable has become a little bit more thin. So it really depends almost on a week to week basis, but I think for a good rule of thumb in this market, that's about the spread differential.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And, and the other, uh, speaking of credit, uh, so it doesn't matter if the city of Lafayette has a triple A bond rating. This is actually, the bond rating would be CMFA's credit rating. It's unrelated to the cities or does our bond rating impact the cost of money?
No, it, I mean, it, it does not. Because you're right, it is the, the credit is the property within the specific CFD. Or in the case of what we do where we pool multiple small CFDs into a single bond issue, it's all of the credits that make up that pool. Um, and so it has nothing to do with the health of Lafayette's general fund. Uh, the thing that would be a positive is obviously these are a tax lien, and so they're effectively a real estate financing by and large. And, um, property, residential property in Lafayette would be viewed ver- would be viewed very favorably by investors because of, um, you know, the, effectively the lack of supply and the value of the properties within uh, Lafayette, and they would know that there would be strong demand for that product. Uh, versus maybe some other areas where there is a greater amount of supply and less demand.
Okay, so our, our bond rating per se does not matter?
N- uh, no, no, because it's not, there's no, there's no security coming from the city of Lafayette.
Right.
Bonds.
Right. And so I guess the, the last question is, what's the cost? Is, does this mechanism provide a lower cost of money to the developer in all cases? Uh, or I mean, compared to private, if the developer going out to get private capital, you know, this is accessing public capital through this vehicle. Is this, is this always going to be cheaper money? Than if the developer goes for private capital?
Um, well, it's, the developers would probably be able to answer that better. I think it, it depends on the point in time, depending on where the, those two markets are. Um, couple of the benefits from this are you are able to access the tax-exempt markets, and so you theoretically should be able to borrow at a lower rate. Our financing's amortized over thirty years. So you, you're able, the developer is able to effectively stretch that out or secure a ties the taxes for thirty years. Um, which I understand is a little bit more difficult in the, the private markets. Um, and then the other thing is it is a tax lien that stays with the property. So when the developer sells the property, they don't need to pay off the lien. It stays with the homeowner.
Okay, thank you very much for your answers.
Sure. Okay, other questions? I have one, um, oh, actually I have two, uh, but in, in the three years that um, you've been doing this, has there been any experience of buyer's remorse with respect to the, this line showing up on the tax bill?
Well, I, I think, um, it is, it, they sellers are required to disclose these taxes to the buyers. Um, it is an additional tax, but it is disclosed to the buyer at, at the time of sale. Um, in most places where we have done these and put them in place, most other projects within the surrounding area also have CFDs in place. Now those tax rates may vary from project to project. But they are on a lot of the surrounding projects as well. Um, you know, I think there, there may be individual homeowners that will call up and say, what is this additional? You know, tax on my, you know, on my line item, but those calls are going to CMFA. They are going to the adminis- administrator of those. Um, I can't, I don't have any specific examples. Um, but in talking to the, you know, the administrators, they do say they occasionally do get those calls about, you know, what are these taxes? What am I paying for? Can I pay it off? Um, those sorts of questions.
Okay, and then I want to follow up on the, the benefit of the city being able to get the money uh, quicker, but they need to spend it in three years. Just a couple of details on that. Um, and this I guess is for Tracy. If we, i- if the bond is funded and we are paid our fees, do the, the monies go into each individual account? Uh, the park land acquisition fund gets it. Park improvement or facilities gets it, its amount. Is that the way it'll work?
Yeah, it, it works the same way. It's just accelerated, so.
Okay. But we don't now have any, uh, time factor.
There, there is a time factor, yes.
No, with respect to any amounts that go in now.
Yes. Uh, those impact fees, my, I don't know if Mala's on the call, but we do, we can't just keep impact fees forever. There is a time limit, um, even the fees that we get as we get them now, there is a time limit. And I'm, I apologize, I don't know exactly. I, I think it's like five years, but there are time limits. You can't just collect the fees and then twenty-five or thirty years later still have the fees without having.
Okay, so let's, um, Mala, do you know what the time period is?
I think Tracy, it's more of a plan for use because for instance with park fees, as you can imagine, it takes us quite a while to accumulate enough money to acquire property.
That, that's, that was going to be my, my point, uh, because with the park acquisition fees, it sits there a long, long, long time. And, uh, with, uh, let's say that we entered into this program and we did it for this particular project and we got a park acquisition payment. Would that go into a sub-account of, uh, fund nineteen seventeen fourteen, whichever one it is, so that we would know that we, assuming it's a tax-exempt bond, that we would have to pay that money out in three years? Do we get that precise? Would we need to be that precise?
No, y- you don't need to. I mean, that would be great, uh, uh, but generally, um, the question that we would ask is, you know, do you have ongoing program, uh, ongoing, um, facilities that you're going to be spending impact fees on? And we would just assume, uh, that the money going in, um, is sort of a, you know, last in, first out or, or whatever, so that the bond proceeds are deemed to have been used on the next expense.
Okay, but then our issue still is, uh, we can go years between, uh, park acquisition. So, um,
Yeah, it, that's the type of thing where we ask the question when we're about to issue bonds. And we do have some impact fees that cities will say, well, no, we're, uh, you know, saving up for a regional improvement that's going to come in ten years, you know, that we run into that frequently. And at that point, we would either drop that from the, um, financing list, you know, and just say that fee is ineligible or go taxable on it. Sometimes if it's just a small component of the overall request, it, it's probably not worth doing a taxable bond for it. We'll just drop it. But again, that's, uh, that's something that is the discussion that happens prior to the issuance of bonds.
Okay.
Um, so we can, we can facilitate those long-term capital improvements that, uh, impact fees or financing.
Okay, thank you. I- if there are no other questions, what I'd like to do is bring in, uh, Mr. Whipple and Mr. Hariri and give them three minutes each and then go uh, and consider them members of the public and then go to other public members after they've had a chance to speak, if they wish to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I will bring in, uh, Mr. Mike Whipple. And Mr. Whipple, if, uh, Perry should come in with you at the same time, please let us know.
Welcome.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Mike Whipple with DFA. I am working with the uh, applicants of Lafayette Lane and, and, uh, and, and hoping to utilize the bold program. And I wanted to say I appreciate everyone's time and and energy as it relates to this issue. Uh, we've, we've had several conversations with, with the members of the council and staff members as well to help educate them on the bold program. We've used, utilized the bold program, uh, you know, for the last three years, working with David and Dennis on several projects here throughout the state of California and found that it's a, it's a great tool to deliver needed housing in, in a lot of jurisdictions throughout the state. Uh, by delivering low-cost financing for public improvements and development impact fees. We've, we've found that, uh, m- majority of the builders that we work with, both regional and national builders, uh, uh, enjoy utilizing this program, enjoy working with their the team that Bold's put together and have really found it to be a beneficial both for their projects and delivering, like I said, needed housing and then to benefit the public agencies where they're allowed to pre-fund a lot of impact fees, th- those impact fees going to critical uh, citywide or regional-wide infrastructure needs such as traffic and parks and and, and other infrastructure requirements associated with projects and and just want to say, we, we are hopeful that, uh, you take this bold program and adopt it, uh, that it's, it's really a no-cost proposition for the city and any mu- municipal. really a no-cost proposition for the city and any municipality that adopts it, then, and wanna just say that uh, in moving forward, uh, we're happy to answer any additional questions as it relates to the bold program, specifically the project and and how we see this moving forward in the future. Uh, so all from there, I'll, I'll hand it off to Perry and let him answer any questions. And I'll be happy to answer any specific questions about the bold program or the project as needed.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Whipple, as Mr. Hariri is coming in? Okay, seeing none? Oh, Council, Vice Mayor Dawson? Oh, you're muted.
I'm still muted, okay, thank you, uh, thanks. Um, Mr. Whipple, just wanted to ask you about the um, other cities that you allude to, Lafayette has a high property value, so there's a lot of um value embedded. Do, are there other similar cities that you could just let us know, just as an example, so we can go take a look at that and how that was received?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think some, some examples out here, you know, whether it's you know, I think generally speaking, if we're ta- just talking about public financing, whether it's done through the bold program or CFDs individually, I, I think Dennis uh, laid out a few of them. Uh, where he's talking about some of the cities in the Bay Area and San Francisco, there's cities uh, or, or counties out here in the Sacramento region that have some uh, e- expensive properties as, as well, uh, Eldorado County and Eldorado Hills are, are using quite a bit of public financing. There's some places in Placer County as well that are utilizing it, and in fact, Dennis and I have, have, and, and David have successfully completed uh, some transactions in the town of Truckee as well that have some very high values uh, associated with, uh, with their project. So, so yeah, that, it, it is happening throughout the state of California, both in Southern California, the Bay Area, Bay Area, and, and in places here in the Val- in the Valley.
Okay, thanks. So there specifically you worked with the San, San Francisco on particular projects, then?
Not, not me individually, no, but, but they, but they are utilizing uh, these types of mechanisms to, to finance public improvements uh, and development impact fees, yeah. I think specifically with the bold program, you know, David and Dennis and I have worked on uh, several projects up in Truckee and, and uh, I, I, we've even completed a bond sale up in the, in the town of Truckee, uh, within the last twelve to eighteen months.
Okay, thank you.
And my firm, just uh, for information on San Francisco, does all of the work in um, Treasure Island and, and Mission Bay. And Treasure Island is under massive development, uh, very expensive property, and uh, there is a, a CFD out there that is quite robust, and I don't handle it personally, my partner does, but uh, our firm is, uh, is on that.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other questions from Mr. Whipple? If not, uh, welcome Mr. Hariri, and if, if you'd like to uh, speak with the council, you, you have three minutes.
Yes, I would, um, thank you, um, Aaron Dury, and um, we, we are, uh, we're affiliated with, uh, I'm the developer Lafayette Lane, and we're the ones that originally engaged uh, Mr. Whipple. Um, the cat, you know, when we engage them, um, we wanted some, uh, Councilman Quoc actually nailed it on the head, this is just another form of um, financing that otherwise is not available for developers today, the capital markets are completely dislocated right now. Um, and we're having a really difficult time financing a condominium project, uh, loan proceeds have gone down to if you can find them for a condo, less than fifty percent, interest rates are through the roof, north of eight percent if you can get it. And um, and this project has a thirty-eight unit uh, affordable component for adults with uh developmental disabilities, so it's, makes it very difficult to do this, and this is really just a way to finance the project. Uh, when financing otherwise is not available. And the homeowners, as um, Dennis mentioned, are, it's fully disclosed, they're aware of this. Um, if this were not there, we would, some other form of financing would be paying for these fees. And the homebuyer would still pay for this through increased home prices. So this is just a way to finance it and spread out the payments over thirty years. Um, one way or the other, the homebuyer would be bearing these costs. Um, it's just, this is a way to accelerate the payment to the city, spread the payments, it's actually lower payments probably for the homebuyer than they would otherwise pay if you added the cost per unit to those units, and they would have to put it on their, um, they would uh, have to take out a mortgage for it. It's essentially the same thing, so they get a slightly reduced purchase price um, in lieu of uh, the increased taxes they're paying. So it's really just a form of financing that we desperately need today to make projects work, and we've used it many times throughout uh, other projects that were master plan developments that required a lot of infrastructure and fees upfront before you can sell a home, and this just happens to be a large enough project in the city of Lafayette in a bad capital markets environment that really requires, so that's all it is, there's nothing magical or complicated, it's just a way of accessing financing to, for developers when they otherwise can't get it.
Okay, thank you very much. Other questions from Minister Hariri? Okay, okay, Councilmember Quoc.
Yes, I know you, the project you're building there, Lafayette Lane involves uh, commercial, the, the John Muir Clinic, right? As well as the affordable units you mentioned, as well as condos, right? The, there's like those things, so uh, what is the average selling price do you expect the condos to go for? One million point one, you know?
Yeah, a million, I mean, these are gonna be maybe average fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred square foot condos, so maybe one point five.
One point five, that's average, okay, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Dawson?
Uh, just wanna confirm, so will there be multiple developers for the different uh, commercial uh, market rate and affordable housing?
Well, yeah, we would probably be doing the market rate condos ourselves, if we can actually get financing for it, the um, the right now, the medical office is intended to be occupied for John Muir, we would build it and they would be our tenants. And then the affordable, the developer will be Sunflower, um, which is operating that. In, in conjunction with then a, another affordable housing developer, Sunflower would be operating it and managing it, and the other affordable housing developer will be developing it.
Okay, thank you, and then.
We're, we're gonna be the master developer, grading the entire side, putting in all the utilities, paying all the fees, putting all, you know, that's why we need this. Cause we're gonna, we have to do all the upfront infrastructure and grading and the garage is shared by everybody, we have to pay it for all of that upfront, we just don't have enough capital available right now in the marketplace for it.
Thank you for that uh, information, and then Mr. Whipple, to your point then, Sunflower and, and a developer that um, they may be working with, they would have um, access to different instruments in the bold program, it sounds like.
Yes, it's not gonna, it's not gonna encumber, that's a very good question, it's not gonna encumber the affordable housing.
Okay.
It's only gonna encumber the condominium units, and all those owners would be fully disclosed, it would be aware of the cost and and um, I believe as David mentioned, it's typically one point eight percent maximum tax, typically homeowners pay I don't know, one point four, when you factor in all the other taxes for schools, and so this is an additional point four maybe typically, point five, something like that on their taxes, with full disclosure of the purpose. So if they don't want it, they don't have to buy the unit.
Right, they'll know it upfront and, and.
Yeah, but, but that was a very good point, the affordable is not encumbered, the John Muir is not encumbered, it's just the condos.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, let's open it to public comment and questions.
If any members of the public would like to comment at this time, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now. The first speaker is Mike Howell. Anyone else would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature now.
Good evening, council members and mayor, um, appreciate the time to talk here. I did talk to most of you, all of you, uh, previously, as discussed, um, kind of educate everybody on the program, I am a project manager for Miramar. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Um, I know everybody's talking about tax rates of one point eight and up to two percent, um, proposed tax rate for, potentially for Lafayette Lane project would be an increase of two tenths of a percent to one point five percent. So it's really a nominal number when you've taken a total amount of tax available. And then it came in questions about projects in the Bay Area or local projects that have community financing districts. And I just wanted to mention that, uh, there are several large um, projects, um, specifically Windermere and Gale Ranch and San Ramon have CFDs that homeowners are taxed on, as well as um, I know for a fact that the Concord Neighbor Weapons Station that's coming up will have a very large CFD as well, pay for infrastructure, so um, it's pretty common, it's a lot more common in, in, like I said, in more uh, developable areas with developers are, are building like Antioch, Brentwood, um, Mountain House, those places, um, but that, it is happening in, in other large areas, like you mentioned Alameda and other places where there are large parts, projects going on, so I just wanted to clarify a couple of points there, um, to the council, thank you.
Okay, thank you, are there uh, questions from Mr. Howell? All right, are there other speakers?
Mayor, there are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, let's bring it back to the council. Um, comments? Thoughts? Councilmember Quoc.
Sure, I, I'm in favor of uh, moving forward with this recommendation per staff, it's uh, it's not an obligation for us at this time. Uh, it is a way for public and private partnership to work together to make, to finance and make projects pencil out potentially. And so um, we do know cities generally would have a lower cost of capital than uh, private enterprises, and um, if that were passed along to the homeowners, honestly, they are getting a thirty-year bond at tax-free s- city rate compared to going and getting a mortgage on the private market, which would be higher, so if they're getting a thirty-year mortgage versus this thirty-year thing on their tax bill, I think theoretically, my understanding is this, this is gonna be a lower cost of money ultimately to the customer, the, the tenant, the owner of the condo, so I think it looks like a win-win-win situation for everybody, and to the extent that cities should also try to do something to help, uh, we need to partner with the developers and work together to create housing in our cities, so if this is something that is relatively risk-free to us, it sounds like a win-win-win situation, so I, I would support it.
Other comments? Other views? Vice Mayor Dawson?
I, I uh, su- support it as, as means of a tool uh, to help finance these products that we sorely need and want to have happen, I am just um wondering about that, uh, for instance, take um Lafayette Lane as a, an example, the hundred twenty-two units, hundred twenty-two families that are taxed um, at this rate, how, how we, I mean, it's a first, so if we're considering that and how that'll go going forward, that in order to um, cover the impact fees, it's the new residents that will be covering that. Um, if that is I, I don't know if that's, it's, that's a fair approach, like how will we, how will we espouse that to them? Like this new park made possible by these, e.g., hi, hi, um, people who are living at this project or the next project comes by, I'm just saying, this is new for us, it to determine that, like we, Lafayette is welcoming of all of all, not just those that can afford this um, extra tax, so I'm just wondering how we we merge that um, with our, the thought process going forward with being inclusive, so. Uh, but I'm all for the, it as a tool and to make these projects happen. So to make sure we're considering that angle of it too, for incoming residents.
Okay, let me at this point ask a, a question of Tracy, actually, two, two questions, what, how much staff time do you see this taking if we were to move forward? Um, well, let, let me. A- as compared to what you would be doing if, if we didn't have this?
Well, if we didn't do anything at all, it would take zero staff time except for accounting for the fees that come in. Um, but I, I believe that, again, as you heard, um, Dennis and David, you know, we join and they honestly take care of almost everything. I don't believe that there would be significant staff time involved. I think that um, in terms of we have, you know, we have, we've issued bonds before and been involved, that's actually a lot more staff time than this would take. I think that the council may, you know, you heard them say that you could pass the responsibility of approving projects as they come onto staff. That's a policy decision, however, that you may wanna make, you may want to look at these projects individually, or at least the first few that come through. So there actually may be more time for you as a council. Um, you know, looking at these projects one by one, if that's what you wanted to do. So there would be staff time in approving the projects, um, but I, I don't see that being significant.
Okay, and is that something that we need, if we were to go forward tonight, just hypothetically, is that something we would need to decide tonight? I mean, what, I can, I, it's pretty clear, uh, joining, but then the next step of uh, um, this is, oh, the resolution authorizing the, the, the program. Do we need to specify in that where the approvals come from at the city level, or is that something we can decide later?
I think that it's always our prerogative to bring it to the council, I think that ultimately the staff can do it. But I, I would not be comfortable, I'm just gonna say, I think that the first few um, that we would probably bring back to the council until we became more comfortable with the types of projects and the amount of money, but no, I don't think you have to decide it tonight.
Okay, other comments, questions, Councilmember Garridge?
So, so my understanding on the process is if we say yes, we want to go forward, it'll come back at a future meeting with the, we're providing direction tonight. Right, we're not voting on this.
You are, you would, you would be voting to approve these two resolutions that would allow you, which would uh, basically just joining. This is sort of the setup, it's just, it makes things move more quickly, they authorize to join the JPA and uh, the use of the, of the B O L D uh, program, so you're basically set up to take advantage of it, but you're not required to take advantage of it. So the next step would be a specific project that you would look at.
So the way I'm reading our agenda and the way the agenda is being presented, says discuss and direct, direct staff. It doesn't say that we're voting tonight to, unless.
Well, can, can we, can we vote tonight on it, or do, should we uh, continue it to another meeting? And, and uh, agenda, well, state in the description that we'll be voting on a resolution. Oh, you're muted, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm having technical difficulties, yes, I do think we should bring back it for approval, I think this was kind of the first um discussion of it, and if the, if it's the pleasure of the council to move it forward, then maybe Tracy could be brought back on a consent calendar.
You could bring it back, uh, the consent calendar at the next meeting, if that's what you wanna do.
Yeah, I'd feel more comfortable having it on the regular agenda and uh, giving us a chance just to do a little more uh, due diligence before we, before we vote. So Vice Mayor Dawson?
I just was gonna agree with that, I think we do need to, um, it would be good if we did a little more due diligence, cause I've seen in different um, cities where there is like a, a certain fee, like for condos or single-family residences or this or that. So there's different ways we can approach this, I don't know if it's project by project, or if we as a city wanna look at how we would wanna whether we're working with the CMFA or doing some research beforehand, how we would structure that, so there is some parity, especially if most of this building will be going downtown, it would be good to know that condos side by side might not, might have a um, you know, kind of some kind of consistency, if that's the case, or at least that um, it's just something to look at, that there's, there's different way, things we should be looking at, that I'm not sure we're available to right now.
Councilmember Garridge?
So the, to the other uh, question along those lines, I'm with Councilmember Dawson, um, in terms of the different projects, actually backing up even to Tracy's comment about um, staff having it come to council to approve, at least the first several projects. So the projects will go through, and this may be a silly question, but the projects, the development projects similar to Lafayette Lane, will have gone through our uh, the projects, the development projects similar to Lafayette Lane will have gone through our entitlement process, correct? Before, I mean, I I'm asking, and is it something that we want? Before we determine that this is a mechanism for them, or that could also be a policy question. And then the other question, if we do this and we join CMFA, which I'm generally supportive, I I have similar, you know, concerns about sort of the the taxes and things like that on just certain property owners. But what discretion do we have on a project comes forward and we get to say where, no, it doesn't fit in this particular area, or I guess I still have some questions about the policy implications of that. And I don't know if there's someone else that, you know, would be able to answer those. And then going down depending on how far, and this is putting the horse kind of way ahead of the cart, depending on how many of these developments that we end up approving throughout the community as as we move forward. I see Mike Whipple has his hand up, but our school districts, you know, very much rely not not only on developer fees, but on those parcel taxes and the school bonds that they would hope to pass in the future. So it's just sort of a philosophical, well, actually, no, a financial concern that once we get down this path, sort of where our our brakes are on it, I guess. And and maybe those are questions that prior to having the, you know, whole resolution come back. And I agree with council. Excuse me, not even Vice Mayor with Mayor Endury, that I would like this to come back as a discussion item, because I think that it's the first that our community, you know, that we've been having this discussion about it. And I think that that's a great opportunity. Councilmember Quoc, thank you for your line of questioning and thank you for the presentations. But I think that we still want to understand some of the yeah, policy and practical.
Yep. And I think this, the issues that you raise, questions you raise, Tracy, if you could look into those before the next meeting, I I can't see on my screen who has their hand up. But if Mr. Whipple has his hand up, he was speaking under public comment, so I don't think we can go back to him. But I do have a question that any four of the people who spoke, I'd welcome their answer. And that is, from your standpoint, what is your timing need? And if it's Mr. Whipple who will answer that, that's it's fine.
Mayor, I'll bring in Mr. Whipple now, and then Perry Harari also raised their hand. So we'll hear from Mr. Whipple first.
Mayor, councilmembers. Again, I'm back. Yeah, I think, you know, I guess I can address a couple of issues. One from with a lot of jurisdictions that we work with.
I I would just ask you, given the hour, if you can address those with Tracy and then she'll.
Yeah, from a timing perspective.
Yeah, I wonder when we should bring this back.
Yeah, I I I think we have some time to to work out a couple of these items that you've brought up. I I I'll let Perry talk specifically about their the development schedule, but I don't think they anticipate construction starting until the middle of 2023. So like, it gives us a little bit of time. That's why we we started the conversation so early, wanted to get everyone educated on the program. We didn't want anyone to feel that they were going to be rushed or pushed into making a decision. So that's why we started so early. So you would have time to educate and learn about the program. And I'll let Perry take it from there.
Hey, this is Perry Harari. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, we do have a little bit of time before we start, but Dennis could probably speak more to this, but this doesn't happen overnight. There's a process to underwriting these things, issuing the bonds and so forth. So it it there's a fair bit of lead time. And we would need these, and we actually need some visibility on when the if and when these funds are available when we secure our financing to start construction. So I would deviate a little bit from what Mike said. We actually need this sooner than later, but certainly if we get it done in the next couple of council sessions, that would be really helpful.
Okay, our difficulty, and I'm going to defer to the city manager on this, is that we have very full agendas, I believe, for the January meeting, given our deadlines that we're facing. And so I don't know what's scheduled for the February 13th meeting.
I think you will be talking about your priorities after the workshop, but you are right that the first two meetings in January are getting pretty full. And you have an additional special meeting as well. So the focus will be on the housing element update and the budget in January.
Okay, Mr. Harari, does February 13th work for you? Suzanne, can you bring?
Sorry, yes, bringing him back in now.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, that that should work. And if that's the soonest available. But the sooner the better, of course. And thank you for getting it on as soon as it's available.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we're looking for a motion to continue this item until the February 13th.
Can I just wanted well, before or after you do this, I just wanted to clarify sort of the issues that you asked me to look into so that I have specific direction and and answer the questions that you want. I just want to make sure I captured it. So she want me to do that now?
Well, could I ask, given where we are in the evening, could council members who had questions send them to Tracy? Would that be? All right. Okay. Thank you. Okay, I need need the motion.
So move to continue the item to February 13th, 2023 meeting.
A second?
Second, Councilmember Vice Mayor Dawson. All right, Councilmember Cannon Dell.
I.
Councilmember Garringer.
I.
Councilmember Quoc.
I.
Vice Mayor Dawson.
I.
And I'm an I also. So we'll continue this item to the February 13th. Thank you all for bringing this to us. Okay, now we're on to agenda item. Twelve items removed from the consent calendar, and the first item was 8A. Councilmember Quoc asked if that be removed. I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, I had just some edits edits for clarification, and they were a little bit numerous. So I would like to just share them on my screen now, and I do plan to submit them to the city clerk for let's see, can you see my Word document here? Councilmember Quoc thanked Mr. Summer for writing.
Yes.
Okay, so just if if you could scan it, hopefully it's large enough to read.
So far, so good from my standpoint. Okay, that's my understanding of what you were saying. Does anyone have any comments or any concerns about the revisions? Okay, Councilmember Quoc, would you like to move amendment or acceptance of the minutes as amended?
Yes, I would like to move that the minutes be accepted as amended.
So a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Candell.
I.
Councilmember Garringer.
I.
Councilmember Quoc.
I.
Vice Mayor Dawson.
I.
And I'm an I also. So that's amendments are approved. Okay, we're on to item 8B, sorry. Yes, 8B ordinance 685, heading Article 3 Storage of Firearms to Chapter 68 Firearms, the Lafayette Municipal Code. Councilmember Candell, you asked that that be removed.
I did, and it's you know, somewhat unusual, but there was a member of the public that came and emailed me and city manager Savatza and wanted me to read his state. He couldn't be here tonight. He wanted me to read his statements into as a public comment. If if I could take that time to do that, that would I I I think it was a meaningful thing he really wanted to say as part of a public comment, if we could do that.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. So the member of the public is Mr. Bruce Witten. And in his words, he says, I want the council to know in my words directly what the experience is like to protect your family on a moment's notice when you are sound asleep and instantly threatened. I want them to know that you have no idea if that person intends to kill you and your family. Or is there just a ransack your house? You don't have time to think. There's so much more than just reading this. They should know the police response, which was excellent, would not have helped, and why that is. They should know multiple prowlers have been reported to the police just before and the significance of that report. They should know that I didn't even know until those few seconds that my farm raised wife had a gun accessible immediately that may have saved all of us. I've remained pretty quiet about this for 30 years for fear of retribution. But the sanctity of protecting one's family is too important. They cannot know the experience unless having lived it. Again, I was not pro-gun. I am pro our individual rights to protect in our home. My goal is to be able to further this discussion and not have a rubber stamped and passed after simply reading my brief letter. But I'm guilty of not being aware of us discussing this. So yes, please do read my letter and any of these subsequent emails I've just sent. My goal is to have an in-person discussion with the council before they vote. Again, I'm betting not a single person on the council has spoken to anyone that has defended their home in Lafayette, where instant access to protection was crucial to one's very survival. Please read that, too. Thank you again.
Okay, thank you. Any I guess we'll open it to public comment, but are there any? And I don't, we obviously can't question that commenter. And so I'll just ask, does anyone have any questions for staff or the city attorney before we open it to public comment? Okay, seeing none. Suzanne, could you see if anyone in the public wishes to comment?
Certainly. If anyone would like to comment at this time, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now. The first speaker is Robert LaVoy. If anyone else would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now.
Thank you, and welcome to the new leadership. I wasn't planning to speak on this, so I don't have any prepared remarks, but I spoke last time. And I was discouraged that there was no, there were no other people in the whole town that were concerned about personal safety. And I'm I'm very happy that this person shared his story. And there was an example in I think it was Elima where a dentist or another person was people banged down the door and it killed his wife. And he had some guns upstairs and was able to, you know, shoot back and defend the the house. It's a, you know, not an easy situation. And so I just think it's, you know, this isn't something that should be just rubber stamped because it sounds good. And you got a lot of comments from people. I would bet that 99% of them done on guns. And that's fine. That's their personal choice. But people that want to defend themselves and their families, I think they shouldn't be restricted by, you know, overly obsessive rules. So thanks for considering that. Appreciate it.
Okay, are there questions for Mr. LaVoy? Okay, thank you very much.
Excellent.
Suzanne, do we have other speakers?
Yes, the next speaker is Nicole Sue, followed by Beth Goldberg, Liz Kaiser, and Toma Lica. If anyone else would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now.
Hi, my name is Nicole Sue. I apologize for not showing my screen. I have a migraine. I'm in bed. But I am actually a resident of Danville. But the local lead for Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America Group, our local Diablo Valley region. And I wanted to speak on behalf of our founder Shannon Watts, who is a Lafayette resident and was unable to attend tonight. We are coming up on the 10 year anniversary of the tragic Sandy Hook shooting in Connecticut that took 22 lives. And the day after Sandy Hook is when Shannon founded Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America. And we are not anti-gun. We are anti-gun violence. This is not about controlling people's property or their right to own guns. It's about keeping guns out of the wrong hands and keeping our our communities safe. Regarding the the comment that was written in, there are many, many gun safes that are fingerprint activated, that are allow people to access guns within seconds. I'm sure your police chief can attest to this. So that is not an issue. Easy access to firearms for for self defenses is exists, and it's pretty affordable. And it's really just a common sense thing. Sandy Hook was much like Lafayette, like Danville, like many of our communities. One of those areas that you feel safe in and that something horrific like that couldn't happen in, but it can, and it has over and over and over again. Moms Demand is trying to establish a change in behavior and encourage people to prevent actions before they occur versus reacting to them. So this is just a simple statement that says that Lafayette cares about its citizens. It has nothing to do with preventing people from owning firearms and protecting themselves. All of that can still happen. And we just really want to encourage prevention and awareness and responsible gun ownership. And that's that. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from Sue? Okay, thank you very much.
The next speaker is Beth Goldberg, followed by Liz Kaiser and one other speaker. If anyone else would like to comment on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Beth Goldberg. I'm a resident in Lafayette. I live in the Spring Hill neighborhood. I was deeply grateful to the city council at the November meeting for unanimously voting to put the safe storage ordinance on the consent calendar. It was a meaningful action that showed our town's commitment to safety in our community. So I'm back tonight to continue to advocate for the ordinance since it was removed from the consent calendar. My uncle committed suicide in 2005. It was absolutely devastating for my family. I'll never forget getting the call or crumbling to the ground in agony. Although with time, the pain is easier to manage. His loss is a part of my story and lives in my heart. Mental health is an epidemic. Fortunately, there are resources for people. But when a person is feeling depressed or hopeless or whatever emotion leads them to thinking to take their own life, suicide is a devastating action that is based on an intense feeling in a moment of time. If we can create barriers in those moments, we will save lives. Safe storage is one of the ways to do this. Access to a gun can have a significant impact on what happens next. One study found that households with locked firearms and ammunition were associated with seventy-eight percent lower risk of self-inflicted firearm injuries. States with other forms of firearm storage laws, known as CAP child access prevention laws, saw an eight percent decrease in overall suicide rates, an eleven percent decrease in firearm suicide rates among adolescents fourteen to seventeen years old. I'm advocating for responsible gun ownership and gun safety. Keeping firearms locked in a safe or having a trigger lock will save lives and is the responsible way to store guns. It creates a barrier to making a deadly decision based on a state of mind in a moment of time. It's our responsibility as parents and adults to reduce the risk of gun violence in our community, including suicide. Please take this preventive measure and pass the safe storage ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from Ms. Goldberg? Okay, thank you very much.
The next speaker is Liz Kaiser.
As Ms. Kaiser comes on, I just want to note we appear to have moved to a kinder, gentler administration because I noticed there's no buzzer at the thirty-second mark on the timer. So I just want to make our speakers aware that we're not giving that that hard, harsh notice anymore.
Our apologies for that technical difficulty with the timer not making a sound.
No, I think it's I think it's better without the sound. The change in color is just fine. Ms. Kaiser, welcome.
Hi, can everybody hear me? Okay, great. Thank you for this late night with all of you. And thank you for your service to Lafayette. My name is Liz Kaiser. I live at Five Lark Creek Lane, and I have three school-aged children. I want to echo Beth and say thank you for your support of this ordinance by placing it on the consent calendar. And because it was removed, I wanted to say a few more things. Safe storage is a common sense measure that has already been adopted by many of our neighboring cities. And we're asking you to join those communities by taking this preventative measure. Safe storage is not cost prohibitive. There are options available that are very reasonably priced. A DOJ-approved safe storage device can be found for as low as fifty dollars, which is pretty accessible for most families. And as Nicole previously said, research shows that safe storage does not restrict access for the legal owner of the firearm. Firearms can be accessed from a safe in seconds. And safe storage ordinances allow someone to have their firearm out of the safe without a locking device if it's on their person. Safe storage literally saves lives. Every year, nearly three hundred and fifty children unintentionally shoot and kill or injure themselves or someone else. Safe storage should apply to all homes regardless of if children reside there. Children visit homes that are not their own all the time. This ordinance does not have anything to do with background checks or making it harder to legally obtain a gun. It has everything to do with keeping guns away from children and teens who should not be handling or playing with firearms. The staff report from the last city council meeting included ninety-eight pages of public comment, which were almost all in support of this ordinance. So there is very broad support for this in our community. And it's time now to join our neighbors and pass this ordinance. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from Ms. Kaiser? Okay, thank you very much. Any other public speakers?
Yes, there are two hands raised. The next public speaker is Toma Lica, followed by Becca Razor. And if anyone else would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now.
Okay, hi, everyone.
Welcome.
Thanks. So my name is Toma Lica Pake. I'm a resident of Lafayette. I've lived here for the past eight years with my husband and my three school-aged children. I'm also an anesthesiologist, and I often work with trauma victims in the hospital. So today, I want to reiterate what the most current and comprehensive research on safe storage indicates, which is that secure storage practices practices play a vital role in reducing the risk of gun violence. Storing firearms securely protects children and adults by preventing unintentional shooting and gun suicides. According to Every Town for Gun Safety, every year nearly three fifty fifty children under the age of eighteen unintentionally shoot themselves or someone else. And firearms are the leading cause of death for children under age eighteen in the United States. These statistics seem unbelievable until you consider that four four point six million children in the United United States live in a home with at least one unlocked and loaded firearm. Every year, hundreds of children in the United States gain access to unsecured loaded guns in closets, nightstands, in backpacks and purses, or just left out. According to Every Town, not an accident index, there were at least two thousand and seventy unintentional shootings by children under eighteen years old between January twenty fifteen and December twenty twenty, resulting in seven hundred and sixty-five deaths and one thousand three hundred and sixty-six injuries. And in twenty twenty, as gun sales surged sixty-four percent, the number of unintentional shooting death by children was thirty-one percent higher from March through December twenty twenty than during the same period in twenty nineteen. Fortunately, safe storage is proven strategy for mitigating child injury and death by firearms. States with secure storage or child access prevention laws had the lowest rate of injury death from unintentional child shootings. Rates of death or injury from this shooting in states with no secure storage laws were double or triple these rates. Lafayette must start somewhere to address gun violence, and we applaud the council's unanimous vote to pass a safe storage ordinance at the November twentieth meeting. Thank you for standing behind the action tonight and voting to keep our community safe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for the speaker? Okay, thank you very much.
The next speaker is Becca Razor, and there are no other hands raised after Becca at this time.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Binder Nagel. My wife signed in, and hence my wife's name is appearing. Maybe that has happened to some of you through the course of Zoom over the past couple of years. Apologies for the misnomer. Again, my name is Ethan Binder Nagel, resident of Lafayette for almost four years with my two school-aged children and my wife. And I just wanted to reiterate and associate myself with the comments made by many of those who went before me in support of this legislation and support of this ordinance. I think that research clearly goes to show and indicate that family members and others within a household and communities in general are safer when guns are properly stored unloaded within the confines of a safe or they have trigger locks, but that we're all, our lives are all safeguarded in that instance. And I think that an ounce of prevention is worth more than any sort of any number of pounds of cure going forward. And so I just want to encourage the council, as you did during the first reading, to unanimously support and pass this ordinance. And that's it for my comments. I appreciate you hearing me out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for the speaker? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. Are there comments, any discussion? Councilmember Candell?
I was gonna make a motion if you'd like me to.
Please.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance six eight five adding Article three Storage of Firearms to Chapter six to eight firearms of the Lafayette Municipal Code to require safe storage of firearms in a residence.
Technically, do we need to waive second reading or is that? Well.
I think you waived first reading, so I think you can just adopt it as it.
Okay, great, great. All right, there's a motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Vice Mayor Dawson, seconds?
Second, or Mayor Guerenger, that might be, former Mayor Guerenger, it might be good for you to get the second in. I defer.
Oh, I was just raising, I was unmuting, but I'll raise my hand in the future.
Okay, it's motion by Councilmember Candell, seconded by Councilmember Guerenger. Is there any discussion before we vote? I just want to say, I do appreciate, I understand the resident wanting to be heard, so I appreciate that opportunity. I don't see this as being rushed through. I think we've all taken time to read the comments from the public, which has been extensive. I think it's fair to say that each of us in our own research on this has has done research and has come to a conclusion. So I certainly wouldn't want anyone watching this to think this is a rubber stamp or something that's being done to feel good. So with that, we'll take a vote. Councilmember Candell.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerenger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quark.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dawson.
Aye.
And before I vote, I just want to thank again the Crime Prevention Commission and the chief Kathy Sturgis Moscato for their review in a very timely basis in getting this to us. And I want to thank Moms Demand Action for being the advocates for this, very effective and very appreciated. I vote aye. It's unanimous. And so it's done. On to item thirteen A, Councilmember Reports. Who would like to go first?
Thirteen I was.
Oh, sorry. Oh.
Eight I.
Eight I.
How could I forget?
If you're first time, that's okay.
Yes, yes. Thirteen I, okay. So is Greg on? Okay, what what I would say is that all of us have read the staff report. So I think, is Greg coming on screen?
Mayor, I'll invite Greg and Diana Elrod to join as a panelist if they wish.
Okay, well, I'd like to have them on on the screen. Yep, okay, we got them. So I think, you know, again, I think you can stipulate that we've we've all read the staff report in detail. So is there anything that since you provided the staff report that you need to update us on?
We had not prepared anything additional to present this evening.
Okay, are there any questions from council members for staff and consultant? Councilmember Candell.
Yeah, the, so looking at Colin Elliott's letter about pulling some of those you know, the first item was do not upzone Area four because it only has two opportunity sites. Also, taking out the Plaza Center, since it's not in our housing element, and pulling those out, are are those two things feasible in your opinion? Could we do that? Or and then in addition, the Plaza Center, do you think if we do upzone it this significantly that we could solicit a letter from the landowner? And maybe we would include it in the housing element? Are those things possible?
So to the first, the the council has the wherewithal to make any decisions regarding what areas are upzoned or not. The the A concern around not upzoning an area is while there may be very few opportunity sites identified in there because the forty-four-page guidance document by HCD narrowly allows, I mean, there are a multitude of rules and stipulations surrounding what can be identified as an opportunity site. The A-BAG, and forgive the the small anecdotes, A-BAG provided each jurisdiction a tool called the Housing Element Site Selection Tool, the HES tool, wherein they took the the criteria that ECD established, the state established, and applied those to the parcels within a jurisdiction. Some total of zero qualified in Lafayette as an opportunity site based on all of those rules at at on the face of it. Every single potential opportunity site required additional information, data, background, et cetera, to show it as an opportunity site. So there's that as well as the fact that what we have seen from the record is that while we are limited in what we can identify as an opportunity site to accommodate Rena, additional parcels can and are redeveloped, even though we haven't identified them. And so therein, we would recommend maintaining what the council previously directed with respect to the the all the areas on the twenty-eighth of November. And there was a second question with respect to Plaza Shopping Center. We can, I believe that the property owner submitted a letter both that that spoke to both the Plaza Shopping Center and the the Rose Dale St. Mary's Maraga Road site indicating an interest in redeveloping even at the current thirty-five dwelling units per acre. And thus, I expect that if the density is yet higher, that that would that interest would remain. They also indicated an interest to have all of their opportunities remain open to them, just to have the flexibility to redevelop the site as they see fit in the future. So I can reach back out to the property owner and inform as much.
Well, and then and then the flip side of that is can can we justify removing it from that area? Because we're not including it. And would that not be spot zoning?
Well, it's it's sufficiently large area where I don't know that it would qualify as spot zoning. We can look at that further. I think that the same thinking in my initial response with respect to the Area Four still stands. And so it while we may not be able to provide sufficient evidence and analysis to HCD to justify it, were the property owner to redevelop a portion of it, for example, building on top of the existing parking lot, but keeping the existing businesses, that that would be a positive outcome for the purpose of housing production while maintaining the existing uses there. So I think we would continue to recommend what what the council directed on the twenty-eighth of November and not recommend changes without additional evidence to steer a recommendation otherwise.
Are there other questions? Okay, let's open it to public comment.
Any members of the public would like to comment at this time, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now. The first speaker is Robert LaVoy. If anyone else would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature now, as there are currently no other hands raised.
Welcome back.
Hello again. I would just like to speak on behalf of myself and Colin, who's out of the country right now and can't speak tonight, or he would definitely be here. Despite Greg's advice, I would counsel the opposite on the upzoning of the area. upzoning of the areas in Zone Four and the three A and three B, I believe it was. We're not counting these areas for very many properties. They're critical areas in the middle of our downtown. And we already have up to fifty-two units in acre density, so it's significant density, much higher than what we've had in the past. And we're not adding anything to our, our count, so significantly. Second of all, I mentioned in a letter today that we should increase our ADU allocation. Greg did give me a call late this evening, and I appreciate that. And there were some discrepancies. I had a model that was working on new housing units that are lot splits, and that got commingled with some of my ADU numbers. But I still come up with between four and five average for the last two years. So I think that something like four hundred units is probably more reasonable. Greg is counting only permits and some permits, like the one in Mount Diablo Boulevard, has four ADUs on one permit, so we need to make sure that we're counting not just permits, but units, because that's what HCD is counting. So I think we should add in those, some additional ADUs, and that'll give us an additional cushion on our, you know, yields and also on the, the buffer. No, HCD doesn't allow us to look at SB nine production, but creating new lots, and with each lot, you can have a new house and a new ADU. There's a lot of potential growth there that's not reflected in any of our past history, so HCD is just ignoring this, but I think we need to make sure, even if we're not factoring it in as a, as a hard number, we need to have it as, as an understanding that that's going to support our buffers and so forth. And, and again, on the upzoning of some of these areas where we're not taking any housing, and with the we lose our rights, the residents lose the right for negotiating for features that might benefit, you know, the residents, and it gives the developers all the, all the benefits, so I hope you reconsider that.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Lavoy? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
The next speaker is Jeremy Levine. And if anyone else would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now, as there are currently no other hands raised.
Lovely to see you this evening, City Council. Unfortunate to be having this discussion again, since it seems like the council already had a clear discussion, and I don't see that changing right now. The fact is, I would like this plan to be different. I have made my recommendations, and Inclusive Lafayette has made our recommendations for how we think this plan could be different. And at this point, it makes sense for the council to submit this plan to HCD, move forward at the work you've done, get feedback on the next round, and then if we need to make more changes, as I think we probably will, we can revisit that discussion when HCD sends more comments. I would like to talk more generally about why housing is good and why we could benefit from upzoning the downtown even more than what we're discussing, and maybe a little bit differently than what we're discussing right now. So I have this presentation, of course, I started on the wrong slide. So Rob Bonta says that infill housing is one of the best strategies to reduce fire risk. This is from this big report that everyone's citing with the CIR stuff. UC Berkeley says that urban infill and vehicle VMT reduction, which is like housing inside, is one of the best ways to benefit climate change. This is just on like ticking the boxes on Mayor Andery's really wonderful speech earlier about the, his priorities in the cities. Lafayette, you know, is a reflection of the nation, and so that little dot in the inside, in the middle, is, is where the most low-income people are. It's also where the most diverse groups are. It's also where we've zoned for all of our multifamily housing. And so that's just the way it is in Lafayette, and coincidentally, this whole map, which the city council has whittled down over and over again at almost every opportunity, is a very, very tiny sliver of our community overall. And in fact, this little box is like, half of it's been taken out already by the city council in this next option. So this whole time rents have been going up, and, you know, I can't live in my hometown, and people call me developer shill because I want to be able to live next to my family, and I think other people like teachers and service workers should have that option to live where they work too. It's just a really good thing that, that we're limiting where it could be, and we're really have limited at every option where it could be, and so I think we'll get an opportunity to consider whether this reflects our values and whether or not we can do so, yeah, thank you for all the hard work, and I look forward to what comes next.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Levine? Jeremy, could you end the screen share? Great, thank you. Are there any questions? I can see. Okay, now, thank you very much.
Was my, can I just ask, was my screen moving? Had I shared the wrong screen?
No, you were fine.
Okay, good, all right, okay. I was, I was looking at another screen part at the time, I just wanted.
Lot of information to absorb real quickly, but it was.
Yeah, it was fast, it was really fast, I know. Yeah, thank you so much, and congratulations, Mayor Andery and Vice Mayor Dawson also.
Thank you. All right, Suzanne, do we have other speakers this evening?
No, there are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to the council. And does anyone have a comment? Councilmember Garringer.
Actually, a question, and, and I'll, I'll get better at asking them before, but, but the, when you come back or when it goes to planning these suggestions that have been made, or questions that have been raised, will staff look at that? I, I heard you, Greg, say, you know, that no intent to, you know, change anything from November twenty-eighth. We also received rather lengthy letter from the Housing Action Coalition, and I was just wondering what if anything in that particular letter might cause any changes as it comes back through the process?
Yes, I, I think at a high level, we'll be addressing the issues raised, because I think many of the issues raised by the commenters are the same or similar issues to what HCD raised. We don't necessarily anticipate treating it like an EIR where every single point in every single comment letter is responded to in kind. I, I think that's probably more than we're going to take on. But I think at a high level, those issues will be addressed, yes.
And then one of the commenters, and then raised it again, the, this evening, do we have an update, and if not tonight, on how many SB nine applications and lot splits that we have actually received and are in the process?
My last recollection is that we've received five SB nine applications, one or two of which have been, four of which were for lot splits, one for a new single-family residence. I think two or three of the lot splits have been approved, and one or two are remaining incomplete, because they submitted without a multitude of information, but I can get further data on that pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? The recommendations, that, Councilmember Candell.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that we really should look at Plaza Center. I think that that one makes sense for us to, to do some investigative work, you know, and, and find out, you know, at seventy-five, you know, if the response from him would be different, and we could put it in our plan, right? And it just seems like that we, we didn't put it in because but their thinking may, his thinking may change with the dramatic upzoning, and we may be able to include it. And that would, to me, that would be good, that would be progress. So.
I, I've got a question for Ms. Elrod. Greg had mentioned that we wouldn't respond directly, we wouldn't refute point by point public comment, I'm thinking particularly of the Pharrell Bron Martel letter that we received. What is your experience generally? Would we, would it be worthwhile to say anything to HCD about the points in that letter?
Yes, it would be good to at least respond sort of generally about, okay, they made comments about this and thus, and we don't agree with their conclusions, and we have whatever, you know, in terms of, especially about the inventory. I think that we just need to respond, not point by point, that's not the expectation, but sort of generally speaking, why we think our, you know, inventory analysis is solid. Just kind of reiterate the points that we need to make.
Yeah, and one, one point I would make, if, if he had written that letter four years ago, and we had had Celia's, not Celia's, El Charo on our opportunity sites, I'm sure he would have said El Charo is a beloved community restaurant here for years, will never go away, so we can't lose, use it as a site. It just shows how things change, and they say it change faster than you think they may change.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, any other comments? If not, I think we're, we're looking for a motion to continue this item to the Planning Commission meeting of January third, twenty twenty-three.
I move that we continue the discussion, or the item, to the Planning Commission meeting of January third, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Quoc. All right, Councilmember Candell.
Aye.
Councilmember Garron.
Aye.
Councilmember Quoc.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dawson.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so unanimous. All right, now, now, we're on thirteen A, Councilmember Reports. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Garringer.
Well, first of all, I wanted to thank Joanne for our, we didn't stop and have our celebration, which normally we would have in our, if we were live and in person, to have our treats that were provided to us, and so I want to thank Joanne Robbins and others who took part in that. I noticed when we came back from our two-hour break, we might have all been enjoy, having just enjoyed those, so. And then also, I wanted to just say that Vice Marion Dory, then Vice Marion Dory and I attended the La Marinda, La Marinda Senior Village Volunteer Recognition and Donor Event on Friday, and presented the first annual Don Jenkins La Marinda Senior Village Award, and so it was an honor to do that, and I look forward to continuing to, to find ways to work and, and acknowledge volunteers in our community, so. Thank you, and I'll save all my, you know, asks for agenda items until the next meeting.
Before I go, we go further, I'd like to ask, City Clerk, do we need a motion at this point? To extend the time?
Well, yes, at eleven PM, so, yeah.
Okay, and do we need to open any items, or is that after midnight, or is that after eleven?
After midnight, I think you'll be you don't have real meeting issues going forward.
Okay, so.
I'll move that we extend the meeting to eleven thirty.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Vice Mayor Dawson, seconds. Councilmember Candell.
Aye.
Councilmember Garringer.
Aye.
Councilmember Quoc.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dawson.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, who's next on Reports? Okay, I'll, I'll jump in. Just a couple things. I walked by the, the rain garden today, and they delivered the moss rocks. And I'm probably more excited about moss rocks than other people, but these are good-sized moss, moss rocks. It really, it really just changes the whole look of the area. It, it brings it, makes it even more semi-rural was. It's going to be very, very nice. I encourage you to go by and, and see the progress there. And then I was going to wait to see if Vice Mayor Dawson raised this, but you may have noticed we don't have orange traffic barriers along Mount Diablo Boulevard. That's courtesy of your ARPA funds. And, and of course, you extended the, the outdoor dining for another, in the parking areas for another two years this evening, so that's, they are temporary barriers, but they aren't orange, that looks good. So now we're going to be looking at the area around Tutus and Public House and over in that, that area. And Joanne, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you're going to be sending out the assignments charts?
Yes, tomorrow I'll send out the city council assignment chart, and ask you all to indicate your preferences, and then I will forward those to Mayor Andery, so he has time over the holiday to make those appointments, and we'll put it on the first agenda in January.
Okay, did we say December twenty-second is the deadline?
Yes.
Okay, great, and feel free, Omal, tell me if I can't do this, but if people want to send me an email, actually, I know we can do it, because I send emails in past years. Mayors have asked for emails.
It'll get ratified right at the council meeting, that's typically how we do it, right? At, at the next meeting is when you actually approve it, Mayor, is that how it works?
Yeah, on the January ninth agenda. Okay, but I can hear from people as to, because I, I think we've done in the past, people have been able to say what they really want to be on, what they'd be willing to be on, what they really don't want to be on. I'd be just interested in that.
Mayor, if they could send those messages to me, I'm happy to forward those to you.
Okay, great, great, okay. All right, and then finally, let's see, Suzanne, do you have the, the logos for the Lafayette celebrating a hundred and seventy-five plus years?
Yes, would you like me to screen share those now?
Yeah, just so people can see them. These were designed by Danielle Gallagher, Danielle Gogo Gallagher. And we have two different forms, because they can be used in different situations, so you'll be seeing a lot of these in the next year.
Nice.
Okay, any other Councilmember updates? If not, City Manager Swartz, your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few updates from our departments. We weathered Saturday's storm fairly well. We were, our crews were called out on Saturday to deal with some blocked drainage on Lafayette Circle and a downed tree on Taylor. But we are also monitoring something at Paulson Court in Mount Diablo Boulevard. This is next to, or close to the Oakwood Club. There has been a settling of the street and sidewalk over time, and we think the storm drain may have collapsed below, so waiting for better weather, but we would need to dig the pipes out and clean them, so. and clean them. So that may be a project which we hope will be taken care of quickly, but, and not be a much bigger problem than we think it might be. The Parks, Trails and Recreation Department is working with the school district to launch an onsite care program at Lafayette Elementary. There's such a growing demand for, from families that need onsite care, and apparently there are wait lists for all four of the elementary school care programs. And so Jonathan and PTR have, are, are working with the school district. And as you know, the Lafayette Shopping Shuttle launched on Thursday, and it makes fifteen stops around on or near Mount Diablo Boulevard, and including stops at our three senior housing facilities. And the shuttle will run for two more Thursdays from ten AM to two PM. And then a month ago, we informed you that there was a robbery at Wells Fargo Bank. Thanks to excellent detective work, the suspect is in custody. And on the planning front, just ask Greg for some updates on the larger projects. Lennar is under construction, they're, they're working every day, and they hope to open the middle of next year. Madison Park, which is south of the library on Golden Gateway, they are mobilizing and expect to start construction early next year. And Lafayette Lane, which you discussed earlier today, they were, are hoping to schedule, submit construction drawings by the end of this month, because the building code changes on January one, and when that happens every three years, we find that several people want to get in ahead of that deadline, because the next version of the code usually gets stricter. And the planning department also, as they usually do when a project is completed, took a tour of two-ten Lafayette Circle and had very good things to say about the quality of that project. It's almost ready for occupancy. That's all I have this evening.
Great, thank you. Any, any questions? For Nuru? Okay, thank you. So we're on to item thirteen C, allocation of funds for employee bonuses. And I will ask Councilmember Garringer, as a member of the Council Personnel Committee, to report.
And of course, that note went away. We, hold on while I find my so, and I don't know, Mala, I guess if I do motion, but Personnel Subcommittee did meet, and then the council met in closed session, and we are, we unit, well, we're going to vote now, I'm going to make a motion, but we would like to move that the council approve a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar bonus pool for the employees, both of those in AIL, our group, our represented group, and then also our confidential and classified non- AIL-represented employees or staff. And then we would also like to recommend and vote on a ten-thousand-dollar bonus for our city manager. And I should have prefaced, but will preface now, that the reason that the council is considering this, we've touched on it a couple of times earlier in the meeting, but as many people are likely aware, because we do say it at almost every meeting, but our staff has been working very, very hard over the last, they work hard all the time, but the conditions have been such over the last several years, and this year in particular, that they've gone above and beyond, and we've had just as many businesses and government agencies have had, we have had a difficult time recruiting, and I'm, I'm actually glad to say that we're starting to see a little progress on that. But the council and the Personnel Committee would very much like to recognize our staff and, and award them, reward them at this time of the year. We also have, as many heard earlier, a budget report that shows that we do still have strong reserves and want to recognize our staff at this time. So with that, I would make that motion of the and now I'm gonna have the two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar bonus pool and ten thousand dollars for our city manager.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
And now let's go to a public comment.
Any members of the public would like to comment on this item? Please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now. Mayor, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, we'll take the vote. Councilmember Candell.
Aye.
Councilmember Garringer.
Aye.
Councilmember Quoc.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dawson.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, so, thank you. And
Thank you.
Thank you, Newru. Thank you.
Appreciative of your support and generosity.
Right, last item on the agenda, written communications, the requests from LPY for the city to cosponsor the Celebrating Our Schools event on February tenth, twenty twenty-three, which sounds great. Is there, does any, one on staff have any input on this, or do we?
No, I think my staff report explains the request, and staff recommends that the city cosponsor the event. It's just yet another wonderful way to bring the community to our downtown and celebrate schools.
Yep. Or Councilmember Garringer.
And no questions. I'm happy to enthusiastically make the motion, but can also wait until after you've asked for public comment.
Well, why, why don't you make the motion?
I move that we approve the request and adopt Resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventy-one, authorizing closure of certain streets and establishing no parking zones for the Lafayette Partners in Education Special Event in February twenty twenty-three, as identified in the staff report.
Okay, is there a second?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dawson. Okay, we'll go to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this, or following the famous lawyer's axiom, don't open your mouth when you're winning?
If anyone would like to comment on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom now. I do not see any hands raised.
All right, we'll take a vote. Councilmember Candell.
Aye.
Councilmember Garringer.
Aye.
Councilmember Quoc.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dawson.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it's unanimous. All right. We made it. Thank you. All right, so we will adjourn until our meeting on January ninth.
Happy holidays.
Have a great, oh, Vice Mayor Dawson.
I'm sorry, just want to make a quick comment. It is the holidays. We do have a holiday promotion shop local. We have the Yogi card, so hopefully just want to, another shout out to encourage all, all of you, as well as the community, to get those cards rather there and support your local businesses during this holiday. So thank you, and thanks again. And that's it.
Yeah, right. Happy holidays.